Good evening. I'd like to call this October 22nd meeting of the Northfield Township Board to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge.
As humbled guests of your creation, dear God, may we with gratitude ask for thy love, wisdom, and guidance not only to this meeting this evening, but also to our daily lives. Amen.
(Inaudible).
Bellinger.
Here.
Docket.
Chick.
Chick. Otto.
Here.
Zelena.
Present.
Manley.
Here.
Shockley. Here. Thank you, we're all here. Okay. Now we have an opportunity for call to the public. If you'd like to share anything you would have with us, please come up to the microphone, turn it on, take it out, and hold it up to your mouth so that everybody can hear out on TV land, and state your name, your address, and if you're angry, please don't get personal, but it will help if you can stay calm and let us know what you're thinking about. So, anyone want to come up?
Sam Iaquinto, 9876 Main Street. I am a 27-year resident and business owner of Northfield Township, and I am here to ask people to vote no on the ban for businesses. Our community is about 10% business, 90% residential. Per planners, a healthy, balanced community is around 30% business, 70% residential. We have had a decaying, declining business community for many years. Establishments, we can bring in first-class developments and businesses because of the regulation that is put on dispensaries, on growhouses, on the transporters, on all aspects of that industry, of the marijuana industry, it is a very highly regulated industry. And so, you cannot have a low-budget business coming in. You will have a first-class development coming into our community, bringing in foot traffic, which we desperately need for the balance of the businesses that are here, and the revenue alone from the license fees that would come into the township on an annual basis are around $280,000 yearly. Our township could drastically use those funds, let alone all the additional revenue that comes into the business community, and then on the tax base from the sale of the product that comes in as well. So, as a community, please vote no on banning businesses. Let's make smart, healthy choices, and let's help our community move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mary Devlin, 9211 Brookside Drive. First thing I want to mention is, you have a proposal for purchase of 7860 Coyle Road in your packet. I see that the buyers occupy an apartment in that complex next to the parcel owned by the township. It is unusual for a tenant to purchase a piece of property next to the complex they reside in. Also, it really is definite as to what will be, it is not definite as to what will be done on that property, for instance, and I quote, "A shed shop or something. I can conduct my projects and fix things," end quote. So I think you should definitely decline this offer. My other thing I want to mention to you, I listened with all due respect to Mr. Iaquinto who was up here, and he's talking about the $280,000 that will come into the township. Well, that's a nice piece of change, however, how much more is it going to cost their fire department and our police department for the crime rate? Is it going to exceed $280,000 as far as I'm concerned? Please vote yes on November the 5th to keep our township family-friendly in agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Amy Scholl, 648 Jennings Road. Honestly, I tend to watch these meetings online after the fact because I've had a really difficult go of it with this community since we moved here and built our home. With all due respect to the incredibly difficult job that all of you do, we were allowed to vote in the wrong precinct for the better part of a decade, even though I repeatedly told the township to please correct it. It was just corrected last year, the night before the election. I had two TV stations and two attorneys who wanted to broadcast it and help me file a suit against you, and I declined because I care very much about this township. I do not want to see it decline. I was raised here, my mother has poured her heart and soul into this township, and she's just shaking her head along with me these days. I think many of you can recall, back when I was a child, we had a bakery, we had a hardware store, we had lots of wonderful businesses for families. Now, and I feel like when it comes to marijuana, people already have their mind made up. I think that's pretty understood, and it is the way it is. People have had their mind made up for weeks, months, years, probably decades, maybe since the 70s, I'm not sure. But I think that the important thing for our townspeople to remember is that on November 5th, we're not voting to legalize recreational marijuana. It's already legalized. They can go to towns or cities like Ann Arbor, just a few miles from here, that really have their acts together and can really sustain that kind of business. And all due respect to Sam, I love him and his family, and we're all allowed to have different opinions on this, but I do not feel, based on my experience here, that we are at all prepared for this. This is thus far one of the most irresponsibly-run townships, and I just keep trying. I have sent letters, I've, you know, done so much in the town to try to make a difference, and it just doesn't seem to matter. And I feel like many of our citizens, we thought we were electing a conservative board here because we can't make it to these meetings. I have two toddlers, I'm trying to get home and put to bed tonight, and a lot of you are working really hard, but I don't feel that we are responsible enough for this. I do not feel we have the infrastructure for this. I don't know if any of you lived in Colorado at the time, but I did. I was finishing my doctoral dissertation there when recreational was passed and shops came up left and right, and the family members we had that were police officers moved states because it was so hard on them. I don't think we have any idea what this town failed to block us from, and it's skewed basically at this point by the time the election comes around because our townspeople who might have been on the fence feel like this was something you already approved, and it's really unfortunate, you know? And for the record, my other incidents with the township was that I am in the Dexter School District when I could throw a stone and hit Whitmore Lake, left or right. I hired an attorney who finally told me that your advice was incorrect. If I were to go to Whitmore Lake as school of choice or to change it at the Washtenaw Intermediate School District, I would actually owe taxes on both schools until Dexter paid off their current taxes. So I was misinformed by this committee then as well. So I don't feel like we're responsible for this at this point.
15 seconds, Ms. Scholl.
We do not, thank you, we do not have the infrastructure for this kind of boom at this point because the way it was passed was not responsibly so. There's a massive amount of these shops that are going to come in, and we can't even get people in the right voting district.
Thank you.
So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Did you hear the red light?
Yeah, I told her 15 seconds. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, oh, here we go.
Here we go.
Here we go, come on up.
David Gordon, Helmer Road. Tonight's packet is 238 pages long, which is a drastic improvement. Over two weeks ago, there was 387 pages long, maybe a record. On this agenda, there's 11 items and a presentation before you even get to the first agenda item, and there's 56 pages of documents to look at before the first agenda item. That may be why the meetings go so long and why, two weeks ago, which I, the meeting I managed to miss, the supervisor's report comments on at least 10 things that aren't being done here, all of which look like they're administrative, and we've had a manager in this township for almost six years. I can't believe this stuff is still not taken care of. We've got close to a million dollars invested in a manager in the last six to seven years. What are we getting for our money? I noticed there are nine agenda items, and the very last one seems the most important one to me. It says, "Request to create a retention basin survey." Can I ask whose idea that was? Ms. Manley. Thank you very much, thank you very much. I'm glad that we're going to do that. This board has already voted $200,000 for an engineering study for the basin, and I believe that there are three or four trustees that are committed to spending another $8 million on sewer expansion. In terms of this survey, I would suggest that the board create a committee, including citizens, to help draft some unbiased questions because I know the last time a board tried to do a survey, they were unsuccessful. They spent $9,000, $10,000, $12,000, $13,000, and never wound up sending out the survey. And as long as you're doing surveys, I'd like to recommend that you do one about the North Village concept. It's in the master plan, and at this point in time, it's the synthesis plan that's in there. And what started out as a really wonderful idea of having a waterfront park that would attract people to downtown Whitmore Lake, you've now taken it and turned it into a development project, with the park being an afterthought. The lake is completely surrounded by houses now. This is the only piece of vacant land you've got. I suggest you ask the voters whether they like this synthesis plan before you encode it as the final project. It doesn't cost much to do a survey and find out if they really like this idea, because if you were to build a really cool park there, whatever property you didn't build on would be so much more valuable than it is today, and you'd be serving the people in the process. So sewers and parks, the two biggest expenses and impactful projects facing this township. Please get more community buy-in before moving forward and spending any more money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to come up? Oh, okay, come on up.
Hi, my name is Shan. Hello? Okay. My name is Shannon Keenig, and I live on Main Street, right downtown, and...
Hold it, oh, talk loud, too.
Talk loud, okay.
Thank you.
Good. So, what I'm going to say, I think is probably obvious, but when I heard the first man speak, I thought, well, maybe it's not obvious to everybody, so I'll just spell it out as a, if we do a thought experiment. We're looking at a very, very powerful and wealthy industry coming in and taking up a lot of space in the town, and they're going to consequently, because they have so much money, they will have a lot of influence. And right now, for example, we have a board that's mixed. Some people are for it, other people are not. When you have a powerful industry, and it doesn't have to be marijuana, it can be any industry coming in, with the money that they contribute to people to run for office, over time, they can control an entire board. I think that this is probably obvious, and it's naive to imagine that that won't happen because that's human nature. If you've ever tried to lobby Lansing or someone in Washington, and that person has taken money from industry, they can't hear you, they can't see the issue, they're, they've been purchased. And so, when the first gentleman talked about, well, this is regulated, it'll be regulated, to the degree that an industry can change the regulations through purchasing the votes, it's very likely that they will do so. So I think it's important when people go to vote that they understand if such a powerful industry comes into a town that doesn't have much else there, they're going to call the shots, and so we need to be prepared for what those shots are likely to be. The last thing that I'll say is, I think, and I think probably a lot of you would agree, that when we say the word trusty, the word trust, that's the first part of that word, and the township has put their trust in you to put the interest of the town ahead of your own personal interest. So I hope that you folks will keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Margaret Rydel, 65141 West State Mile. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I will, of course. I live out. Everything that's been said basically is talking about the town. There's a whole lot of people and voters that live out, and what I'm hearing is things like event areas. An event is where a whole lot of people come together to have a big party, and that's, now, nobody's said that's what they're going to do, but speaking to Shannon, if they buy the board, which they can, and they will, if they are able, then we're looking at events. Also, 60 years ago, they said smoking wouldn't hurt you, and look how well that worked out. Nobody knows what the long-term use of marijuana will be. Also, there's no way to regulate people that are driving and smoking, and that's a sad, sad thing. And Mr. Iaquinto's with his $250,000, that's not a lot of money when it comes to having regulators and having police and all this other stuff that needs to be done. Amy was up here, she lived in Colorado, she told you what it was like. I'm sorry. This township deserves better, and shame on you that didn't speak up and put a stop to it like everybody else around us, except Ann Arbor did. Because guess where all those people from Green Oak and Northville and Farmington and Farmington Hills and Brighton are going to come to get their weed.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Good evening.
My name is Carl Watkins, 438 Jennings Road. This board is, this township is known for being hard as heck to get into for a business. Everyone all around her thinks, laughs at this township because you can't start a business or you have to jump through ropes, even for nonprofits. Now, all of a sudden, we're open for marijuana business, and I can tell you about Colorado. I wasn't here before, but as most of you know, I've been in law enforcement for many years. The Michigan Association Chiefs of Police has had speakers to go around and talk to communities that wanted it. They invited three police chiefs from Colorado who had beautiful towns until this. Yes, they get more tax money. The quality of life is absolutely terrible since they've had it. Those of you on the board who ran as conservatives, I talked to some of you before I came here tonight, who are on a committee to help elect you, would never have voted. You ran on a conservative ticket, and then you let the voters down. This is the worst place. I was at a meeting regarding something else, and the topic was brought up about opening businesses, and this was in Livingston County. They were talking about how easy it was, and they said, a person in the audience said, "Why is it so hard in the next community over talking about us?" He said, "That is a different story. That's a different county." And it's a joke to try to open a business here. Now, all of a sudden, we get enough businesses, we can open more marijuana places than we have in town now. It's just, we should listen to all sides. I know a lot of you are going on the assumption, 67% of the people voted for it, but even the Ann Arbor newspaper, which is not known to be conservative, said that majority of people, overwhelming majority, in Michigan don't want it in their backyards. As of today, almost 1,000 communities, I thought it was 400, now it's up to over 1,000, have opted out of it. Everyone else around here has opted out of it. For some reason, this board thinks this is the place to have it. We're near the marijuana capital of Michigan in Ann Arbor. Everyone else around here has sense to go out of it. You are the laughing stock. People really laugh at trying to open businesses, legitimate businesses that can't, but yet we've opened a floodgate for marijuana. I urge everybody to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Here we go.
Stacy Sloan, 9972 North Main Street. I'm here to tell you a story. So, a story about my grandpa, he was born in 1905, was born in Clayton, Georgia. He was literally dirt poor. He finished the third grade. What was interesting about him is that he moved up here for opportunity. He came up here to have a better life for him and his 10 kids and his wife, and he got a job as the maintenance manager for the GM proving grounds. And at that time, he chewed chewing tobacco, and all the guys would share these trucks, these white pickup trucks. My grandpa would choose chewing tobacco, and he'd spit it out the window, and there was nowhere in the truck to spit his tobacco. So his boss called him in one day, and they said, "Nick, you gotta stop spitting that chewing tobacco out the window. It bothers the other guys." And my grandpa said, "Well, I'll tell you what. I've been chewing chewing tobacco since before I ever heard tell of General Motors, and I'm going to keep chewing chewing tobacco for the rest of my life, and I'll stop chewing tobacco when you tell the other guys they can't smoke in the trucks." He turned around and walked out the door. Two weeks later, his boss called him in, his boss's boss was there, and he said the same thing. "Nick, you gotta stop chewing the chewing tobacco. You can't spit out the window, it bothers the other guys." He said, "I'm going to tell you what I told my boss. I've been chewing chewing tobacco since I heard tell of General Motors, and I'm going to keep doing it, and I'll stop when you tell the guys to stop smoking in the truck." The next day, they outfitted every white pickup truck with a spittoon between the gear shift and the seat. Those guys weren't going to stop chewing chewing tobacco, or my grandpa wasn't, and they weren't going to stop smoking. My grandpa was a highly principled person. He was a lot of things. So why am I telling you this story? I come to this meeting every month to talk about how there is not much ethics and accountability or principles on the part of more than a few people on this board. There have been fewer, no fewer than five times, that some people on this board have been called out for engaging the services of Mr. Burns for writing, editing, servicing, reviewing some ballot language that we're all here to talk about on November 5th. I don't care about marijuana. I don't use marijuana. I don't care about marijuana. I care about the principle, and the principle is that there are people here who sit right in front of you, in front of me, and they've engaged the township attorney, and they've refused to make a statement about it. We have called for action several times for this issue to be addressed. If I or anyone else in this room wanted to start a ballot initiative to outlaw rain barrels in this township, I could do that. I'm within, that's within my rights as a citizen. I'm not allowed to use the township attorney and his free resources to help me write that language, review it, or tell me that it's okay.
Thank you, Ms. Sloan. Anyone else? No one? Board member response to call to the public. Do we have anyone who would like to state anything? Mr. Docket.
I would like to say about the tub or the basin that was mentioned, I hope that no one tries to make a big deal out of this like our clerk has said that she's going to send this out, and she wants to do it without ruffling a bunch of feathers and getting everybody all upset about it. So I hope we all just let it go easily, let her do it. I think it's important, so remember that. Please don't start getting our internet and everybody back and forth for the next six months. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to say anything? Ms. Otto.
Yeah, I wanted to address a couple of things because I think allegations are run really deep, and when you are stating allegations about people or assuming that certain people are going to take funds, you need to understand what it is to be a, on the township board, and what it means to be as a candidate. So when you run for as a candidate, you do have to fill out financial information. You do have to disclose how much money that you receive. If you receive over $1,000, you have to, on a regular basis, identify the donations of the person, the dollar amounts, and who it was from. It's not just you get the money and everything's hunky-dory. You have to disclose this to the county, and then it is public information. You're allowed, the public is able to see your financial reports, they're allowed to review them. They're right on, they're very much public knowledge, you don't have to FOI them or anything. As far as this township being irresponsible, I have to say, going back as long as I've been here, I have been here for over 17 years, and this township has been nothing more than very responsible in regards to fiscal responsibility. In the time that, where townships were in the red or going bankrupt, this township, and I was not on the board during that time, this was probably in the 80, in the 2008, 2010 time period, up to 2013, the township, this township was running in the black, and actually, we were, our general fund was probably anywhere between 70 to 80%. This township has always been fiscally responsible, and they have never run in the red, and they have always been responsible to the citizens of this township. As far as the marijuana issue, I have to say, I know that people are saying that this is conservative, but I have to tell you, I am very surprised on the people who are for it, proposal one, and I'm very surprised for the people that are against proposal one. You have a lot, people that I thought were very conservative, that would be, that would stand behind it and vote yes, have told me that they will vote no, and people that are liberal, that I thought would vote no, have told me they will vote yes. So this isn't a Democrat/Republican issue. This is a bipartisan issue, and I just wanted to say that. You don't know what your neighbor is thinking, and if you think your neighbor is conservative, and you think just because they're conservative that they're going to vote yes, you may be wrong. I have been wrong very many times when I've talked to people in the community about this, and it surprised me on the way the people are voting. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Manley?
Just a couple of quick things. Again, the vote on Tuesday, it's not, or November 5th, it's not a business ban, it's a marijuana business ban. There's a word missing in there, so just to clarify that for the public out there listening. The fees that, the $5,000 application fee that Mr. Iaquinto was referencing, that can only be used for the application process and for like the building apartment. That money does not go into the general fund if, I think somebody can clarify, if we overcharge them, if we don't use all that money, it has to be refunded back to them. So the fee process is not a profit-making deal. And then, Mrs. Scholl, I know, I can speak as far as a clerk's office, as soon as we figured out what was going on with the voting registration, we had a deal with the assessing department, and as soon as we got everything clarified, I know that we got you changed over right away, and I think the deputy, our deputy... changed over right away, and I think the deputy, our deputy clerk even hand-delivered the ballots to you. So I hope that we satisfied you and that it's correct, it's just a process that we had to work through. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Selmac?
So as everybody knows, there's a vote on November fifth, so do get out and exercise your right. I am actually looking very much forward to that vote, to see the end results. So, sixty-four percent of the community voted to legalize it, and now we will have the ultimate vote, so the board will get specific direction. Again, to me, it's not what I feel personally about the issue or not the issue. There are sixty-four percent that voted yes. So yes, I am a trustee, and the trust is in me to represent the majority, regardless of how I may feel about that issue, 'cause that is how I think my job should be done. I do think we need to do something with the building and zoning, which is here, we need to be more friendly, it's been ongoing, it is an issue that we need to address, and again, it is back here to see, 'cause we wanna be a helpful community, we wanna encourage businesses, we wanna make the process easy. And every time I go out in public, which is quite often, I hear about how difficult it is. So we need to find where the root cause is, and we need to fix it. I agree, again, the agenda is way too long, and I think the one issue we have is the information is not complete, and then we have to come and revisit it. I think we do need to see what the community feels and their buy-in on major items. If we look at our North Village Plan, there were two surveys done, one is on page nine, that said sixty-four percent of the people surveyed said the property should be used for a community park or recreational. Then there was another one, and that was a respondent of three hundred and ninety, and then there was another one done at the trunk-or-treat where I think ninety-two respondents, and again, sixty-one percent said it should be, a property should be a community park or recreational. Then you get down that twenty-eight said it should be for combined use. I do think we need to outreach to our constituents, and certainly November fifth is one outreach, is, you know, what do you wanna do with that park? What do you wanna do with land preservation? What do you wanna do with the sewer basin? What about our roads? I think we do need to do a survey. Are you willing to pay for any of this? Do you want it to come out of the general fund? I think we need to do that, is really reach out. We have some major decisions to make, and the more input we can get from the people, the better. And again, November fifth, we'll speak loudly. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Ms. Bellinger?
I wanna thank members of the community for coming out and speaking tonight. Thank you for sharing your views, your stories, and your opinions and input. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I won't add to any, I agree with, oh, Ms. Chick?
Yeah, I will be brief, because basically, everything's been said, but on the issue of the marijuana, on November fifth, it will no longer, and it hasn't been a board issue, it will be an issue that the people will decide, and then we'll know for sure which direction people will go, and so everybody, please get out and vote. On the North Village Plan, we do have a synthesis plan, and actually, that synthesis plan was created with the help of the community. When we initially bought that property, I was on the board that purchased it, it was never intended to be purchased as just a park area, because the township can't afford to maintain all that area and keep it off the tax rolls, we have to do something with that park area. It was always meant to partner with a developer to develop part of it. The first survey that was taken was the day that we opened the park, and the people didn't know what the plan was, or what the thought was on what to do with it, or what the ramifications would be of not having some kind of development on that property. We have to have at least some revenue generating so we can maintain it, or we have it revenue-neutral, but it is a burden on the township to continue to have it just as a park, even with grant money. So we did have community input on the synthesis plan already. Mr. Lippens actually was facilitating, excuse me, facilitating that, and I believe we had two visioning sessions at least, yes. So, and it was also made with the help of the Downtown Development Group and the DDA, so it's not that we have not asked the people what to do with it, but there are other considerations, so. That's all I have on that, so thank you, Marisha, I appreciate everybody coming out to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll move on to the consent agenda. I only, I have one correction in the October eighth regular minutes, and it's, the township attorney was Jeff Alber that, who was here, and that's on the first page, and I already told Ms. Lumbel about it. Are there any other comments, questions about the items in the consent agenda? Mr. Dockett?
I would like to have, I'm talking about the special meeting.
Okay.
I'm looking at the minutes, there's nothing on this that said that the board asked at that time to have something on here so we knew what we were coming to the meeting for. I believe that that should be in these minutes, and I wanna know why they're not in the minutes.
It's at the top of the second column where it says, "Several board members said they were unaware of the reason for this meeting."
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah. So, it does state that several members were unaware of the reason for the meeting.
Well, I believe that, I don't think that that's enough that we talked about, that we were gonna, that we were from there, from this time forward, we were going to be notified. I don't see that on here.
You're right, Mr. Dockett. We talked about this in the closed session, and we'll try to correct that problem.
No, I want these, I'm not gonna vote for these like they are. I don't know why, why isn't it in here? I don't think we should okay things until, until there's something in there that we spoke about in this meeting.
No one made a motion at that meeting?
No, we didn't, well, we didn't make a motion, but everybody on this board said, and then we come tonight, and the same thing, it's not, there's nothing on the special meeting tonight.
You're right, Mr. Dockett.
So, so this is what I'm getting at. This is like a slap across the face to us, and to me, anyway. I don't know how the rest of the people feel, but I gotta tell you, when we went, all five or six or seven of us say that we're gonna, we should do this, and then we don't even get it into the minutes. So I'm not, I don't think we should support these minutes.
Did we actually, obviously, there's a vote here, was there clarity during that meeting that we did say we want more information?
It was a consensus, there was no vote.
There was consensus.
Right, there was no motion.
Yeah. We talked about it earlier, and we'll do better at our next meetings, and I can guarantee that.
It's not on tonight's meeting. It's not on tonight's special, either.
Right, you're right, we made another error, Mr. Dockett. Okay, Ms. Otto, do you have any questions?
Yes, on the regular October eighth meeting, and this is under section four, it was the motion by Chick moved, Zelnak second, to establish a five hundred, and it should be foot buffer between schools, and a one thousand foot buffer between marijuana businesses. That's what I think the motion was.
Actually, the motion was just a five hundred foot buffer between schools, because previously, the motion, I went back and listened to the meeting.
Okay.
'Cause the existing motion already had a thousand between businesses.
Oh, okay, so it should've just been a five hundred foot buffer between schools.
Or from schools.
Okay, and marijuana businesses. Okay. I misunderstood that. Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I was looking at that as well, and, 'cause the thousand feet had already existed, and we had that discussion.
Did it say five hundred buffer, or should it say five hundred foot buffer?
It should say foot.
Okay.
Feet, five hundred feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
But that is correct.
Okay.
The second motion.
Between schools and marijuana businesses.
Five hundred feet between schools and marijuana businesses.
Yes, correct.
Thousand feet between...
Well, I think the thousand feet was already in there.
That was already in there.
That's already existed, and so we went back and forth, there was a lot of discussion and confusion on that.
Okay.
So the final motion...
So we do just need to have the first part corrected?
Correct, and the second.
To establish a five hundred foot buffer between schools and marijuana businesses.
Correct.
Okay.
Did you get that one, Ms. Lumbel?
It's a pretty key one.
Okay. Okay. Any, anything else?
Yes, I have just a comment on page two as well. When we're talking about, oh, in the first column, the plan does not state how many working farms are in the township, or what percentage of land. Zelnak said that this is not data that is collected, it's not easily attainable. I mean, we don't really know a source of that, but I'm sure, I don't know if I actually said, I went back, and that it's not collected, it's just not easily attainable.
Did you wanna make a change to the minutes then?
Yeah, make it that it's not easily collected, or something. Easily, it's not that it's not collected.
Right.
I don't know how complete it is, so I just said it's not easily collected, how's that? Make it simple.
Said that, okay, right. That data is not easily collected.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I just had one question, because this probably needs to come back. Paul Burns wasn't at that meeting. It was on number five, Zelnak moved, Bellinger second, to have the township attorney verify that since the additional four uses listed in the new state rules are not listed in the township ordinance, they will not be allowed in the township at this time.
Right, he needs to confirm that.
Yeah, we need to have that confirmed.
Okay.
So I think one of the audience members talked about events, and that was one of the new, newer requirements that came out, and we wanted to know, since it's not in our ordinance, do we still have to do it?
Okay. So we'll have that at the next meeting or so?
Yes.
Okay.
Certainly, I think that would be needed, right? By November twelfth.
Ah, yeah, that's three weeks.
Maybe not, I guess it depends what happens on November fifth.
I have more when it's my turn.
What else do you have, Mr. Dockett?
I called Tammy today, on her report that's here.
Okay.
And I asked her about, it says, that they were going to reimburse, reimburse the seven hundred and fifty dollars for supplies. So I said, "Well, now is this a month, or a year, or whatever?" She said, "That's per year." And I said, "Well, what was it last year?" And, you know, I was just trying to figure out, you know, if it, how much has changed, because there's a lot of changes here. And she said that, I just wanna add this, so, you know, she said it's pretty close to the same, that it has been. And then I asked about the five fifty for, you know, I said, "They've changed it, and wherever they don't, they don't sell, or people don't come and eat. If it goes back, they charge five dollars and fifty cents." So she said she's had a meeting with all the people they feed there, and told them how important it is since they've changed it this recently, that they all, if they're not gonna come, they have to let them know, so they don't orbit, because they could lose money pretty fast up on there. I just, would like to have you know that.
Okay, thank you.
The next thing is, I wanna talk about...
Can we stop just there? I have something in that, too. So, thanks, I had similar questions, I'm glad you had an opportunity. So has this contract been reviewed by our attorney?
Mr. Burns?
What's been reviewed?
The contract with the county, it seems like, it's a form, it's a template service contract for the food service at the community center, and they made a few changes about reimbursement, and it's time for us to sign up again.
It's not reviewed.
You've not reviewed it? All right.
So who is the township manager signing it, or is it Ms.?
The township manager signed it.
I would like to make a motion that it's, you know, that it's reviewed by the township attorney before we sign it.
No support.
Okay. You're approving the contract pending the attorney?
I'm fine, I mean, there is changes, it seems like it, you know, it's gonna be a little bit better for us, and for my monetary, the good thing is it will continue the senior nutrition program.
Right, so that's a positive. Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Zelnak, and second by Ms. Otto, to renew the contract pending the attorney approval, and allow Mr. Ains to sign it. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passed, seven-zero. Okay, any more comments about any of our other items on the consent agenda?
Yes.
The sewer one, for sure.
The sewer, okay, this is the township manager's item. Do you have a question, Ms. Bellinger? Did you just want Mr. Ains to virtually read his report?
Oh, I wanna know, I don't want him to read it. I guess I wanna speak to those who are more intimately involved with us, maybe it would be Dan or Mr. Ains, about this and what they recommend the township board consider.
If you have operational questions, Dan would be the one to answer those, but you have a situation where we had a backup at one household with the sewer, and we submitted the claim to our insurance company, and there are five criteria that you have to meet to validate those, and so our insurance company indicated that the claim did not meet those, and therefore, they did not intend to make any payment on it. I then reviewed it with Mr. Burns, and then I talked to also the homeowner about it, and then I notified the board, and so far, I have had no other direction on that but to abide by the insurance company's decision. Subsequent to that, there was another situation in the same household, and so Dan went out and talked to him, and maybe Dan, you could take it from there for a little bit?
I also wanna know, if you spoke with Mr. Burns, and Mr. Burns wants to add in on this dialogue, if he wishes to.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, and the second situation, we had not had an opportunity to TV the line, and typically, we don't TV a line if we find a problem and clear the problem, we don't typically TV the line. That will now be a policy, if we have a plug anywhere, we will TV the line from now on. And we found another problem in the line that was further down from before, it was related to the first one. We'd had a vector truck come out there and vector the line, high-pressure get it, run up the line, and factored everything out, and we thought we'd cleared the line, and evidently, we hadn't. It was further down the line this time, and I don't know if it was something we broke loose and went down the line, but the second time was in a section below the first time. So I, because we didn't TV the line, I thought we should be somewhat responsible for that
And I could take it just a step further.
Go ahead, yeah.
And initially, I concurred with Dan, and I also talked with the homeowners. I have submitted to the insurance company again, and it's not gone through the process yet, so I don't have a conclusion from them.
Okay.
All my concern with asking Mr. Burns, is there any legality issues here?
So if the claim's denied, potentially, there's a lawsuit against the township. But typically, what happens if it's been turned over to the care... But typically, what happens, if it's been turned over to the carrier, uh, the township board would wait until the carrier made a decision to see whether it's covered by insurance or not. So, as I understand it, the carrier hasn't made a decision, according to Mr. Ains, has not made a decision on his claim yet. But it's a claim like any other claim against the township.
Um, Ms. Chick?
Thank you.
So, do we have any idea what the reimbursement cost would be?
That's what I was going to ask.
What's the total cost? The homeowner said what it's costing.
No, we don't have a total cost yet.
Okay. Ms. Otto?
So, I do have a question now. We submitted a claim to the insurance company, but we have not submitted the total cost of expenses incurred?
What we're required to do is notify the insurance company whenever there's a prospect of an insurance claim. Then there's a form that gets submitted, and normally, you would submit the proof of, of what that cost would be. So, the first time, we had that information. This time, we don't at this point.
Okay. Then, has the agent or the adjuster gone out to review the property themselves?
Normally, they don't review it themselves. They talk with Dan and I.
Have they talked to both of you?
On this one, I, I had an email from them. I called and left a message. I haven't heard back today on them.
So, on the first claim, they denied it?
Yes.
And you haven't talked to them? Adjuster hasn't gone out there? But now, on the second claim, you're waiting for them to talk to you?
Well, I'm attempting to get in touch with them. I tried again today, but I haven't gotten through to them to get a confirmation. What I do is I talk to our initial agent, and then they refer it to the underwriter, and then the underwriter gets back to me. So, I've gotten the message that, that has been communicated between the agent and the underwriter, and that the underwriter then sent me an email. And I've tried to get back to them, and I didn't get a response yet. But, um, what they based the initial claim denial for the first event was based on the state law provision about having met the five requirements-
I see now.
-which included, um, that we had any prior idea that there was a problem. So, the reason we've brought it back up to the, uh, the insurance company is because, uh, Dan feels that there is some possible liability for the township. And there may well be, uh, and we do need to correct going ahead that we do these TV lines. Uh, what I had him do subsequent to that is we did TV about fifteen hundred linear feet, I believe he said, Dan, uh, in the region of that area, and we didn't find any blockages at this point anywhere else. So, we think it's been resolved that way. And the question is whether or not, the board wants to override the insurance company on the first claim or not. And second, do you want to, uh, consider a claim if the, uh, insurance company turns it down on the second one?
Well, I think, too, we need to know what the, how much, and what's the expenses.
Yeah.
So, I think when we get all that information, then we can make a decision.
Okay.
Uh, the first one was in the email that I gave to the board, was the documentation from the homeowner.
Can, can we, can we move on with this subject?
No, I got, I got-
We're not going to end up making a decision.
I got a lot of questions. I want to talk-
You go ahead. You can go ahead and ask your questions.
Uh, I've got two, I got one question on the statement. The question is, has this got anything to do with the block that was left in the sewer?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Now, now I have a statement to make. Okay. Northfield Township has forced him to hook up to our sewer system and to pay three hundred and sixty dollars per year for the privilege. Fast forward, the guy's got eighty-five percent of his family's basement is covered in raw sewage. Okay, guess what? The governmental agency has made itself immune from liability from the public that it serves. Not a nice way to treat the property owners of Northfield Township. The guy does not want to turn in on his insurance company, because he just turned in, uh, on his insurance company. He does not want to get canceled. I think the township should pick up one hundred percent of whatever it costs. That is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Can we ask to have a total amount of expenses, um, that this person incurred by the next board meeting?
And an update?
And an update?
Yes.
I would like it as an agenda item, not in a report.
Right, yeah.
And, and, and in addition, I would like our attorney to give his legal opinion on-
Yes, I support that.
I, the legal opinion on, you know, our paying it, if that is what the recommendation is from the township attorney. And I'd like to know what our policy is. So, what's, uh, what's our policy on this? If we had a thousand incidents like this, what is our policy? Do we pay it all? Do we say they have to claim it, and we pay the deductible? What is the policy?
I do agree for the attorney's opinion on this issue.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Once we get all the information-
He said reliable.
I don't recall him saying that.
Okay.
So, I would just like to complete the process of turning in the second claim, which has been turned in, get the opinion of the insurance company, get the total cost, and, and I'd also ask that Mr. Ains would reach out to the property owners to see what their deductible is. I know they said they don't want to claim it, but I think that is information that is needed as well, as far as all the cost associated with that.
Okay, Ms. Chick?
Um, real quickly, on, um, the Warner issue. They've been here a few times, and apparently, it still isn't resolved. And I see there's a comment that we'll continue to moderate. I think we need to reach out to them. If we can't knock on their door, make a phone call, that they must have a phone number that we can speak to them, because, um, they've been looking for resolution for quite a while.
We've been talking about this for, uh, two, a couple of months.
Right.
So, we know there was a problem, and it's our fault.
It's not our fault.
Well, we did not inspect. We had, we had a contractor come and raise up the manhole, and we did not go and inspect afterwards.
That's a different one.
And they left the blocks in there.
A different one. We're in a different one. We already, we moved on.
About the Warners.
Well-
As far as the other issue, they were in to see me again yesterday, so we are meeting with them. I did point out to them that it's hard for me to stop by and see them when they keep the gates shut with barbed wire on it. So, they gave me the phone number, and they said I should call them and make an appointment whenever I'm out that way. But I have regularly talked to them throughout the last two years.
So, I have a, can we, as a township, not reach out to the Drain Commission and have them go and address that, Mr. Ains?
We already have, haven't we?
And so, what has been their conclusion?
I have not talked directly to Drain Commission. I've been talking to the property owner. He tells me he talked to the Drain Commission. I need to find out from them what the conversation was. And then I wanted to take the walk back through his property and see what the ditch line looks like and what's involved there.
So, again, my recommendation is that personally, you deal directly with the Drain Commission and get them out there and have them, because ultimately, if they decide it's okay, we can't make them. And I want to see their opinion in working with the property owners, and then keep them apprised of what's going on. But I think it's important that the township, as a government entity, work out to another government entity and get them to get action.
And, and then he said that there's a problem with the maps, too, that the two maps don't agree. The O'Connor drain, and there's another drain, that their names are different. But the Drain Commission was out there, and they did do some cleanup, but they did not. There's still another issue that's not resolved, so.
Okay. As a point of information, um, I asked Mr. Ains not to put the, um, the sewer backup on as an agenda item because I didn't feel it was ready, um, and there was more that needed to be done. So, that's why it wasn't on this time as an agenda item. Um, so, uh, don't blame him for that, although, that, we, we weren't going to be able to have it ready for this meeting anyway.
Then I think personally, it should have been an agenda item and said, "We are working on it. The information is not ready," or that's what should have been in the report.
It was in his report. It was, it was in his report.
Yes, and if, and if the people were to show up that was having a sewer problem-
And they are here, actually.
Well, they should be able to get up and-
They are here. The people are here.
It's on the agenda. It's on the agenda.
Okay, okay, okay.
If them people have anything to say, they should come up here and speak. Isn't that not right? It's on the agenda.
We're not ready to vote on it yet.
We don't have to vote on it. It, it is on the agenda. If these people want to speak, that does happen to, they should be able to do it. It's on the agenda.
That's fine. We had a public comment period.
No, this is not a public comment. This is on the agenda.
So, it was very confusing, the way it was handled.
This is on the agenda. Agenda items, the people can come up if it's on the agenda and talk about it.
Did you want to come up and tell us anything, or are you planning to just deal with Mr. Ains?
So, as you all know, we had an issue on September seventh, which we do have a total for that damage. The reason why we do not have a total for the most recent incident is because it's still ongoing. We still have fans in our basement trying to dry out our basement. We still have an odor coming from our home. We actually had to stay in a hotel last week because our house was not, I don't want to say safe, but it wasn't livable. The smell was so strong, and my husband and I also have two very small children. We weren't comfortable with them cleaning with bleach and other chemicals and being in the house where they wanted the windows closed and the heat on while all these cleaners were going. So, we stayed in a hotel last week. We actually just came back home on Sunday afternoon. So, we've been out of our home for more than six days with two very small children. Modernistic is the company that we chose to go with for the cleaning. They still have equipment in our home, and they don't know when they're going to be able to take it out. We also don't know if there's actually more damage done to our basement. I don't want to get into details right now, but we're still looking into everything. That's why we have not given you all a total yet.
Is your basement finished?
I'm sorry?
Is your basement finished?
It is not finished.
Okay. Okay. So, there's a lot more that need, we need, information that we need to get before we can make a decision.
Of course, but we're still getting that information.
Thank you very much for that. Okay. So, the consent agenda. Um, I'm going to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda, um, the special meeting of October eighth, uh, the minutes of October eighth as corrected, and approving the senior nutrition program contract. Oh, we already did that. Um, and to receive the township manager update. So, a motion to accept the consent agenda by Chalkley. Do I have a second?
I'll support.
Support by Manley. Do we have any more discussion?
So, there's no contract's going to be signed with this acceptance of this consent agenda at this point?
Well, one, one, I have one.
Well, there's one that's going to be, um, reviewed by the attorney.
Right, that's, that was passed separately.
Right.
My, my one is, I'd like to have the manager get the address of the Driftwood Arena Marina that's going to be tore down. I don't like when he puts in here, the, it's, it's that the address is Barker and Main. Well, Polly's is Barker and Main. The video store's Barker and Main. There's three or four houses across the street that's Barker and Main. So, can we please have, let everybody know what house we're talking about, what building we're talking about?
Yes, I'd had that in a prior report, but I'll try to keep it each time where I put the address.
The corner, okay, thank you.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Okay. Manley? I'd like to make a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda as presented.
I'll support.
Motion by Chalkley, support by Manley. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
I do. So, again, it's a long agenda.
It is.
It is now eight twenty. Um, and we have a presentation, so, I don't know. I would like to make a motion, well, after that, but I'll make a motion that we adjourn at nine thirty, and we take notice of what things need to be done.
I'll support.
Who's going to call for the vote?
That would be-
I, discussion, I think we have a lot of business we need to take care of, so I do not want to, um, cancel, I do not want to end without finishing business.
I will, I will support.
My motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I support it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I warned you.
There was a motion to end at nine thirty. Not yet. It wasn't called yet.
All in favor say aye.
Um, I will vote, no.
Well, wait a minute. You need to come back here and-
Let's have a roll call vote.
All right, so a roll call vote on leaving at-
Take over. You can take over.
Leaving at what, nine thirty?
Nine thirty, yep.
We have business that we need to finish. I think it's more important than ending early. I don't want to have another meeting in a week.
We're not going to have another meeting. We're going to have complete data.
All right. We call the question. Um, Manley, yes. Otto, yes. Zelnick?
Yes.
Dockett?
Yes.
Belliger?
No.
Chick?
Yes.
Chalkley?
No.
You want to leave at nine thirty? Yes or no? No?
Okay, good. Okay. Get complete data.
That's a no vote.
That's a no vote. Now, you have another motion on the floor.
So, it was five, two.
You have another motion on the floor to accept the balance of the agenda.
Yes. Oh, we had that one already, already. All in favor say aye.
Yeah, we all, we all said aye on that one.
Did we?
The balance of the agenda.
Yes.
And then you interrupted. Okay, go ahead.
That's correct. I did.
We're good?
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't vote on that.
That's right.
All right.
Right before she left the desk.
I didn't think we did either. So, we need to vote on the agenda.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, yes, Ms. Manley, we do. Ms. Chalkley?
All in favor.
Aye.
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 Okay, and Mr. Dockett's gone, so, six zero. Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Oh, I was opposed.
To the second one, sure.
The one about the nine thirty.
Yes. Okay, Ms. Schink, you have a good task to move all the pertinent information.
Right, I'll try to go quick. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Sue Schink, your Washtenaw County Commissioner. And I'm, I came tonight, and I appreciate you having me because, um, I wanted to talk about the Washtenaw County Road Commission's structure, because this year, um, for a couple of reasons which I'll get into, the Board of Commissioners is considering the possibility of changing the structure of the Road Commission from an independent commission to, um, a department. And we'll have a public hearing specifically on that option tomorrow night, and then there will be another one on November sixth. Um, at this, so I'll just go through the presentation and explain a little bit why and how we got to that. So, the, the County Road Commission, um, there, there's sort of two parts to it. There's the, the governing commission, which is a group of three people. Um, under state law, it could be three or five members. And then there are the employees, which we call the road commission. We're not talking about changing anything about the employees from the managing director on down to the people who actually do the work of plowing the roads. And I'll just ask you to bear with me, because I'll try to answer your questions, um, throughout the presentation. So, um, a few years ago, the, um, state legislature passed a law that gave the, um, county boards of commissioners the right to take the road commission in-house as a department if they so wished. And in January, our board collectively, all nine of us, came to the conclusion with, among other priorities, that we wanted to look at that possibility, because we believe that with the right comes a responsibility to make that decision. And under the current law, the ability to do that would end at the end of this year. Uh, there is, um, legislation in the legislature- There is legislation in the legislature, it's passed through the Senate, it's being considered in the House, that would extend that deadline. And if that deadline is extended, we probably would not make a decision this year. So, we're considering all the options, and those options are expansion of the road commission from three to five members. What I was just talking about, transfer of road commission duties to the county board of commissioners. We aren't seriously considering changing road commission members from appointed to elected positions, but that is a possibility. Or we could retain the current system, although that is a little bit of a change. If the ability to change the road commission goes away, some of the moral suasion we have with the road commission might go away with that. Currently, it is governed by three, by a three-member board. Doug Fuller, Barb Fuller, no relation, and Rodrick Green. The day-to-day operations are overseen by a managing director and carried out by about 130 employees. And those are, those are three departments, operations, engineering, and administration. So I'm not going to go through the employee benefits. What I think is important to know is that much of the money that goes to the roads comes through the state or through federal grants, and that would not change with a change in structure. What would change is that the, things like human resources might be consolidated, financials might be consolidated, and the county would then bear the responsibility for making sure that the retirement system is okay. All of those things are things that the county can do because it would be about the fourth largest department in the county if it were to become a department. And we have a road millage that's being distributed according to a strict formula, which ensures that it is distributed fairly. In Michigan, there are 83 counties, and six counties have their road commission functioning as a department. And the other ones, some have elected officials, some have appointed officials, some have three-member boards, some have five-member boards. And from what we can understand, they all face, they all face the same problems of not enough funding. Some of the counties that did take their road commissions in-house as departments did so partially because they thought that they could serve their citizens better if they did that. And they have seen some savings in human resources. So I think...
Ms. Schink, so could you go back to that slide and, please? So, are you saying then again, 83 counties? And that 77 counties lies within a county road commission, so kind of like we're currently set up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And so six have it in the actual, under the commissioners?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Ingham, Jackson, Calhoun, and Barion counties had transferred the duties of the road commission board to the county commission. And Wayne and McComb abolished their road commissions after they became charter counties, so that was a little bit of a different process. So, if the county board of commissioners were to transfer the duties of the board of commission, the road commission, to the board of commissioners, we must hold two public hearings. And so, there will be one tomorrow night, and there will also be one on November 6th at 6:45 at 220 North Main. And I will say that I can't, I can't tell you whether, I can't tell you what the outcome of this will be because we're all taking it very seriously, we're listening to citizen input, and there has not been any kind of preconceived decision made at this point. We thought that it was important to go through the process and to go through it as openly and transparently as possible. So I already talked about that.
So, Susan, so it basically is the county board of commissioners that are making the determination how they want this structure.
Right, we have the right. And part of the reason that this came up as a priority is that in the past two years, there have been some very serious issues with the road commission where citizens have really complained quite a lot, and they've complained to the board of commissioners and they've asked us to do something. Now, we've heard people who support the road commission as it is and people who want to change. So, I think it's a complicated issue, but those issues, if I could just finish this one thought, sorry. Now I've gone off script, so. The cutting of the trees along Mass Road and North Territorial happened without residents really knowing what was going to happen, and there were some really unpleasant situations between road commission representatives and the citizenry. And it took, it took some board of commissioner effort, I think, to get that situation to change. And then another similar situation came up with the herbicide spraying this spring where the road commission announced an intention to spray in Webster Township and some other townships the right-of-way 14 feet in and 14 feet up with a combination of three pesticides that are actually pretty dangerous. There again was public outcry. There were a lot of conversations with the board of commissioners and the road commission, and eventually they changed course. And so, part of the idea is that a county department would be more responsive to the citizens. You know, clearly there's room to talk about that. Yes?
Yeah, my question, thanks for pointing that out, you know, those details, because that was, one of the questions was the, what were the complaints? I would suspect that the, well, kind of two points. Is a lot of the complaints the road quality or problems with the road? It's just probably yes. I assumed that was going to be what I was going to hear you complain about, and then I remembered the trees, that was a big deal. But I don't, it seems like it would be hard to expect a board of commissioners to have any road experience when you have the three people, right now it's the three-member head of the board for the road commission, they kind of have some roads experience, do they not? And that is probably something that is good to have.
So, one of the things that we're trying to do is keep it from being personal and try to keep it as a policy decision. As the, one of the members of the road commission does have road experience, Doug Fuller has quite a bit of road experience. Barb Fuller, when she was appointed, did not, and Roger Green, when he was appointed, did not. So, another thing to think about is that there's the managing director, who would remain, who is in charge of the day-to-day operations of the road commission. But there would then be our administrator, who, he's the person who's in charge of the day-to-day operations of the county. And so, it wouldn't be that the board of commissioners would be making decisions about, you know, what size gravel to use or any kind of engineering decisions whatsoever. So it's more about a link between the citizens and the road commission.
So would this possibly be a reduction, we would lose three people?
Right.
Okay, so it might be a reduction in overhead. It may actually cost a little less.
I think it would be a small reduction. I'm not sure that it would be a significant reduction.
What would you say we would lose by going with the model of permitting the board of commissioners?
I think that...
To bring it as a department? What would we lose?
The thought is that there would be people who are closer to the citizenry making decisions when there is an issue that comes up, that it would be perhaps more responsive. Because right now, road commissions, road commissioners, I'm sorry, are appointed for terms of six years, and they are not chosen by the people. They're chosen by the board of commissioners.
That was going to be my question, who chooses them?
Yeah. It's a political appointment and sometimes, yeah. I would say it's all, and this is, you know, this is, this is not meant as any criticism of the road commissioners themselves, I believe that they're all, they're all good people. They work hard. But they are all very political, and I believe they're all political.
But you said, you said that you are not going to change that. I believe they should all be elected. That's my personal thought. They're more, if they're elected, they're more apt to do what's right for the people.
That's a good point.
If they aren't, they can get out. But the ones that are elected are in there for years and years and years.
So some of the financial consolidation, centralizing some of the expenditures, that type of thing, you'll have some cost savings there. What happens with those dollars? Do those go back into the roads? Is it just a better funding, you know, better funding, using the dollars more wisely?
Well, yes, I think that it, some of it would probably go back into the roads. I think as a general manner, it's quite a large budget, and so I think that the savings would be on the order of perhaps, you know, several hundred thousand dollars, not the millions that we're talking about for the overall budget. So, yeah, I think that some of those costs that are allocated to personnel within the road commission, only a few of those functions would be consolidated, but I think that those would probably go back into the roads. I think it would depend exactly what that position was, how that would work.
Okay, Ms. Chick?
So, six years is a long term? Would they be reducing that to four?
We don't believe that we have the power to change the terms of the road commission appointments.
Okay, thank you.
I can see that there would be an economy of scale if there was the joining, you know, so there could be a lot of advantages there. And then the commissioners are elected, so they would have the ultimate control. I guess I would just be concerned that the officials could get into meddling in what's something they don't know about, you know? And so it's nice to have people who are expert in that field to actually take care of it. On the other hand, there'll be a lot more people thinking about what they're doing. So, I can see the pros and cons.
There are definitely pros and cons, and I say, we all get a lot of requests for help on road commission issues, and we all get a lot of, you know, you should do something about this. And so, that's part of what prompted it also. We thought, well, if, you know, people are asking us to take responsibility, we should look at that process very carefully.
Okay. Does, is it, does it give our Washtenaw County or the board of commissioners any more strength or pull to bring it into a department with the board of commissioners in the sense of, does it give it more voice if you talk to Lansing? Does it give us any more voice to ask Lansing for our money back to apply to our roads?
I doubt that because we're pretty united in that. I would say that we're all united in asking for more money from Lansing.
Ms. Zelenak?
So was there a cost analysis on each option of what it would save or cost?
We haven't done a, we haven't done a, there is, there is some cost analysis in here.
It was really convoluted to me, unfortunately. I would have thought, I was looking for option one would cost this much more, option two would cost, you know, or save, you know, this is what you would anticipate each option to cost more or save.
We didn't have easy access to the road commission financials.
All right, all right. So, we think there's going to be a little saving if we change the structure.
Yeah.
Next steps, so me personally, at a minimum, they should be elected. If you keep the board, they should be elected so that there's accountability. My preference is that it goes to the commissioners because I get to elect you or not elect you. And I also agree the two issues that came about were the trees and the weed control that, you know, you had to get involved, I think, because your electorates, you know, your voters said, "We don't want this." And they aren't held accountable because it's a six-year term and appointed. So, next steps, so I can voice my opinion, is to go to the meeting or send a note?
That's right. There's a meeting tomorrow at 6:45, and we will be holding a public hearing, 220 North Main in the boardroom. And then again on November 6th.
Same time?
Yes. As for all of you, I will take your comments back to the board.
Great, thank you.
So, thank you.
Do you need our comments now or am I just emailing to you?
If you want to email me more comments, that's absolutely fine, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I have more comments, but I know that we have a schedule here tonight, too.
Yes, we do.
So, as long as I'm standing here, and I realize it's taking a little bit of a liberty, when you're talking about the park, I know that I'm on the Washtenaw County Parks and Recreation Commission, and there has been comments, the parks commission didn't want to, well, just wanted to be respectful of Northfield Township. If Northfield Township would like to partner with the county on the park at the lake, the county would be very happy and willing to talk about what a partnership could look like. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item. We have the adoption of the master plan. So I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 19612.
I'll support.
Motion by Chalkley, support by Chick. Okay, any discussion on this now? We've been through it a couple times.
I have a discussion.
Go ahead.
So, on 9/24/19, the motion was made by Zelenak, moved by Chick, seconded by Chick, that changes requested by the board at a meeting are to be included in a memo or through the minutes with the location, including the page number of the changes, and this is to be included in the package when the item returns to the board to be provided by who owns the agenda item. Motion carried 7-0. I fail to see where that was done on this occasion. So, I will not be voting for this because we make motions that I think everybody needs, or consultants as well as board members need to follow.
Ms. Chick?
Were, these were grammatical changes, right? They weren't substantive changes.
Generally, yeah.
It was just like commas and spellings.
Commas and spellings, and then...
We did have some changes. I mean, I...
Did you send yours?
Kind of agree because we had, we requested some picture changes and, and then we also, because I think we had one where it was a farm and we were talking, it was a farm picture and we were talking about park. And I, and I kind of do agree. When I had to review this, I had to go back to my notes to make sure that we covered everything and if I had something that was, that was in summary, it would have been a lot easier.
And so if we go to, like, I'd like to go to page 35 because I did the same thing, and hopefully all my notes were, you know, I don't know if I captured everybody else's notes, I know I captured mine. But on page, on item number two, we said the township, it used to say "may" implement? I mean, did we agree to change that to "should"? And from a legal perspective, there is a difference between "may" and "should."
What page are you on? I'm sorry.
I am on page 35. Number two, it says the township "should," and it used to be "may." And is that, I mean, so that was changed, and there's a little space between item number five, it should be 5,000, I think it was over 5,000, I can't remember the exact amount for the SOL grant. Good. And then if you go to, I think, page 96. And I might have missed it, but I thought we said that we would include the SOL grant on that page.
Yes.
And I don't see it.
It was, it was on a different page, wasn't it?
We also said that we would include the SOL grant on page, this current page, on page 35. Which has been done.
Any, any other comments, questions about this master plan? Those are, I don't want to minimize those concerns, but I think that it's time for us to adopt this plan so that our township can move on. It's been through the planning commission. It's been through us. I think it's good. Ms. Bellinger?
Just briefing through here last night and the night before, it seems like there's a few paragraphs that are very repetitious. I mean, just over and over, the same paragraph in a lot of different spots. And you turn a page or two and there it is again. And because I have my radar on the land preservation movement, if you will, I just see that repeated, repeated, over and over again, you know? And it's to the point of, like, it's a little bit alarming as opposed to just being maybe common sense because it's so repetitive.
So that was brought up at the last meeting. And I think there were certain areas that we've asked for it to change because it was repetitive and, and it didn't fit in that area. But.
It was changed.
But it was, and it was changed. But the other areas that we identified kept with the same consistent language. So when they do this, they do keep with the same types of language throughout it, it's my understanding. And.
As long as it applies.
As long as it applies. I can't remember which one it didn't apply to, but.
Village Center, I think.
Growth and, or Village Center.
Village Center.
It was, you know, farmland was in that, and we go, no, it shouldn't pertain to that. Or the downtown area. So, but I think it was appropriate for the ones that we did identify.
It's, I think it's a technique that you don't have to, it uses a lot of paper to do that technique, I have to say. But you can look at one particular item and you can see the themes running through it. So I guess that's the only, the positive I can say about that. Not the only positive, but the positive. Mr. Docket?
Yeah, we got a hundred and some pages of restrictions. Until we start getting another novel like this of what we can do, I'm voting no. I don't want all these, this is what you can't do. But there's nothing there of what we can do. So I'm not for this type of baloney.
Fine. Any more discussion on the master plan? I really think we have a good product here. And it really does, if we move along with this master plan, it will really open up some areas that have been stagnating in the township.
It's all restricted.
No, we're going to be allowing some things on Whitmore Lake Road that we haven't been able to do. Okay, Ms. Bellinger?
Like on page 40, just, I don't know, we might want to consider changing a couple words on page 40. Sentence, that's numbered three. I thought the word strongly might be removed. And then the next line down, the third line where the word implementing is, maybe the word suggesting. I don't know if it's something we want to force. That was, that was my thoughts on that, just when I read that sentence. It just was, just struck me as too, as maybe too limiting. I don't know. If there's any other thoughts on that?
Ms. Chick?
We do have a premitigation policy. So we would have to implement it where it applies.
Right. And the cluster development really is an advantage for developers because then they don't have to build so many roads. It saves a lot of the environment. And a lot of times, they would prefer to do that anyway because it's more cost effective for them.
We could be just encouraging, instead of strongly encouraging, maybe? I don't know. It's just a, just a small thing. But there's a lot of little words like that that sound very, 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 I mean, they sound too, too suffocating or something. I don't, I'm maybe just trying to get the.
I know you're concerned about things being too directive, you know? You must do this and you must do that. But I, I think that developers, when they are coming in here, they're able to wade through all of these and come up with a product that works. Okay. Well, I guess I would like to call the question. Roll call, please. Looking for my notes. Otto?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Zelenak?
No.
Bellinger?
No.
Docket?
No.
Manley? Yes. Chalkley?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That passes. Okay. We don't need a super majority on this, do we? No? Okay.
Again, I would like to thank the commission for putting the effort into it.
I thought it was two thirds that has to pass, but.
I don't, I don't, I think it has to pass by two thirds at the planning commission, but not by, not by ours.
I think, I think it does.
No?
No.
Okey doke.
Okay. Well, we on to the next one? Can I move that the board adopt resolution?
How about four fifths?
How about three fifths?
I moved that the board adopt Resolution 19-615 to establish the North Village Park for public use.
I'll support that.
In perpetuity.
Oh, well, we all, a couple of us support. I'll let you support it. Okay. Bell, it was Chick.
Now we can talk about this. Do we want to say something about the description? Maybe five acres?
So that.
Right now it says four, approximately four. Should we say approximately five at least?
Yeah. So that's what my question was, is, I had two questions, is why a resolution now? And my other question is, why not seven, five to seven acres? Why did, what was the four acres? What was the reasoning behind the four acres?
Okay. Did you want to explain, Mr. Lippens?
Yeah, I just wanted to understand.
I don't understand the question. Four years.
So what, the first question is, why the resolution now? And another one, the second question is, why four acres? Why not five acres, six acres, seven acres?
The.
There's two acres.
So the, the resolution at this time is being presented for two reasons. One, the township has two interested developers, and it is the, I think, strong preference of your subcommittee to maintain the front area of this site for public use in perpetuity. And the estimate of approximately five acres was given because that's the area that roughly corresponds to the area preserved for the town green in the synthesis plan that the township has adopted. So what we're looking for is, is direction from the board to have your staff essentially come up with a legal description for that so that we can separate out the part of the, of the site owned by the township that the township wants to maintain as the really grand public space. I think it's important to note that this won't be the only public space that's included in this site, that if the township proceeds with selling a part of this site for development, that the likely procedure for approving that would be a PUD. And that the PUD would likely also include things like a trail, parking, road, public roads or private roads that have public easements on them. And that many of the other amenities that are included in the North Village Plan would still be looked to as development, for developed for public benefit outside of this area. But at this time, your, I think the board has provided a direction to support this resolution in the past. And in speaking with two interested developers, this is the direction that the committee is given. And by making it a resolution, the idea is that we could move forward with broad consensus over what to do with the front of this parcel, and thus provide clear direction to anyone interested in development about where they would be intended to develop. So I hope that that answers your question.
It represents a commitment by this board to establish that park in perpetuity so people aren't concerned that it would be sold off to some developer at some future date, you know? So that, that was part of the reasoning for the resolution also.
So what was the reasoning behind the four acres? I'm just asking.
You're right.
How did we come up with four acres?
Well, we have the two plans that we've gotten. And then there's that open space that's in the front part of it toward the lake. And so we, well, Mr. Lippens drew it out and figured out how many acres approximately was in that whole area. And it was, it's really between four and five acres. But that's, that's kind of an approximation.
Yeah. What we would do is we would look at the synthesis plan that the board has adopted and come back with a legal description for the area that corresponds to the town green and beach on that plan and bring it back.
I got a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Bellinger.
Okay. The in perpetuity is one question and concern. And connected to that is, there is that one section that was slated as a possible commercial or mixed use, as you guys like to refer to it as. So that would obviously need to be excluded from this drawing, a draft of the park to be protected in perpetuity. And then I also have a question of, does the attorney have any opinion or that we need to know or suggestion or input on this idea of, of this park in perpetuity situation? If he has anything to add that we should consider before we actually make a vote?
I would say just that the resolution that I prepared included allowing for that mixed use space. That was the recommendation of the committee as well. And then I'll defer to the attorney.
Okay.
To make a park, a public piece of property, a park in perpetuity, we need to prepare deed restrictions for the property. And those have not been prepared, but the only way to restrict it beyond, let's say, this board's term to bind future boards, is to start preparing deed restrictions and putting things in the chain of title. It's a very precise legal job to do that because you're binding property for eternity, right? So I've not worked on that, but there are, you know, courthouses and so on and so forth have deed restrictions like that. The courthouse in Howell, for example, has a deed restriction. And also what's called a right reverter, if it's never used for a courthouse, it reverts to the prior owners. But it's a, it's a specialized deed restriction that will need to be prepared and approved by the board and so on and so forth.
That, that, that belonged.
Right. You can't just do it by a resolution. It has to be in the chain of title.
The courthouse been there for 200 years.
So should I withdraw my motion at this point? Would it be advised to anybody?
I don't know that what you're really doing here is.
Well, if we can't really bind it in perpetuity, maybe just designate a section as a park.
You're, you're actually not binding it in perpetuity tonight. It's, what you're doing is passing a motion. But I would say I would maybe ask my office to prepare documents to, because it's, it's, your action tonight is not effective.
Not binding.
So that, and just to kind of comment a little bit more on that from a planning perspective, it was the committee's.
I can't hear you.
To comment on that a little bit more from the planning perspective, it was the North Village Subcommittee's preference to include the language in perpetuity in this resolution. And what it does is it establishes a policy, the intent of the board to support establishing that park in perpetuity. The resolution also directs you to empower your staff to follow through on implementing this, this motion. The other point that I wanted to make, establish in perpetuity, that, you know, taking the action basically will empower us to move, move forward. And it's a policy decision that we're asking for.
Mr. Burns?
And I understand what Paul's doing, and I understand that's what the committee is doing. But I think that because you're starting an effort to do something that is forever, I think you should have the legal description of what it is in front of you before you vote on anything. I mean, if we're doing this purchase agreement and it moves by an acre or three quarters of an acre, or we change the description based on negotiations.
Exactly. That was my concern.
And we've done something potentially for eternity and we can't change it in our purchase agreement, I think it's just.
Good advice.
You artificially handcuff yourself in the negotiations in some respect.
So, so my thought was, what if, what if it happens, we have two extra acres? What do we do with that?
That's what I'm saying. If you're working to do something permanent, I think you know, need to know exactly what that is.
Just for clarification, the memo does state that you could adjust the boundary. And if it is the attorney's recommendation to strike the term perpetuity, I think that that would fine. I think the resolution still holds value. And, you know, if we were to receive grant funding for the park, we'd also would be required to maintain that park as a park or pay back all the grant funds. So it really is a policy establishment to dedicate the space as a park. And I think it would be pretty simple just to say, strike perpetuity from this statement. It was included because it was the recommendation of the committee. But it hadn't been reviewed by the attorney. So it could be the good thing to do to strike that.
Well, I could either.
Is it premature?
Ask that we either alter my motion or resend my last motion and make a new one. So I guess the new motion would be to adopt Resolution 19-615 to establish North Village Park for public use.
That, that was already a motion on the table. So.
But it was in perpetuity. I wanted to get the in perpetuity out.
She wanted to take in perpetuity out.
You want to amend the motion?
She wanted.
So you want to amend a motion to take the perpetuity out?
Yeah, remove in perpetuity.
Okay. Do we have a second on the amendment?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Bellinger, support by Chick, to remove in perpetuity from the Resolution 19615. Mr. Docket, do you have more comments?
Yes. I would like to have us think about, I don't know, there's no page numbers here. I don't know who made this up, but why don't they put page numbers?
Is this, this topic?
Fishing pier.
It is.
Beach.
Page two.
And boat slips.
And the Lavonier builder.
I mean, do we want, do we want to be, I don't think about this. Do we want a fishing pier and boat slips? Who's gonna, if there's 10 people that want to come onto this pier and stay overnight or whatever, I, I think we, before we get into that, I think that should be taken out for right now, anyway. I don't think this township needs to be responsible for boat slips and fishing piers.
Do we need to vote on the amendment?
Yes. All in favor of the amendment to strike in perpetuity in both places, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
I like to have a roll call.
Yeah.
Roll call. So it's a resolution. Chalkley?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Zelenak?
No.
Manley? Yes. Docket?
Yes.
Dockett?
No.
Okay, that passed five to two. Okay, so that's for the amendment.
Right.
Okay, Ms. Bellinger?
Can I have another amendment to say five acres, approximately five acres? Or five to seven acres?
I would change the, and I thought I heard somebody in the public say minimum, and I would change it to instead approximately is minimum of. This way it could be anywhere above.
Yeah, a minimum of five acres. I could certainly do that. A minimum of five acres, please. Like to change the whereas, um, that the preservation is minimum of five acres.
I think you should say including, you know, the lakes, you know.
And I'll support that.
So we do have a motion by Ms. Bellinger and support by Ms. Otto. Okay, now we have, Ms. Manley wants to ask a question.
Are we getting ahead of ourselves on this since we don't have any specifics? I mean, it's very broad. I guess, yeah, I don't know, I just, I mean, I definitely want it, I just don't see the point of doing it now while we're in the process of working to get the legal descriptions? Or is this just to guarantee that that stuff is being done?
This is a, was a part of the legal description.
So the part of the motion is directs your staff to prepare the legal descriptions, and it's, you're establishing basically a policy, and that policy, it will assist in, um, communicating the board's intent for site development to interested developments, developers. So you have more authority, you have the only authority over making this decision. And, you know, the, the committee that you've charged is talking to developers, expressing their preferences, and they've come back and said, this is our preference. We know that this is what we want for the, for the park on this site. They're asking for you to establish that as a policy so that when we communicate that to interested developers, they know what they must include. Um, so that's the purpose.
All right, so this isn't premature?
Well, but basically it tells them what they can't have, you know? So now it's all the property in the back. You know, so, and the public will know that we intend this to be a park.
And we're gonna take it to minimum.
That includes the water, to include the waterfront, right? That includes a waterfront. Then, um, I don't know, I'd hate for, I'd, I'd hate for us to eliminate five houses because of a quarter acre or who knows what, you know? So I guess we can, uh... Yeah.
If you're finished.
Yeah.
How many acres did we put out in our...
Thirty-three!
No, in our RFP.
The whole site.
Open space. How many acres was that? I recall nine, so I don't know why we don't start our position like we did our RFP.
That's not the recommendation you have from your North Village Committee.
Okay.
And the, the RF, the synthesis plan includes a very large community green and the, the town green. So the recommendation that you have tonight is roughly for the town green area, um, and that, I guess that's the answer to your question. That's, that's the recommendation that came from your subcommittee.
And none of this has, again, been scored, so we don't know if dropping it from nine to five, how it will be. And again, we have the North Village master plan that, you know, indicates that.
Yeah, so your point on scoring is, is well taken. I've heard your request to have the committee score the, again, I've heard your request again to have the committee score.
I know, and there's been other requests that have been ignored, so I'm hoping that this one will not.
I will, uh, share this with the committee, I'm sure they would be happy to score it, and that will be the, the intent.
Does the board feel that, uh, this is premature?
Personally, I didn't understand why we were doing it, so I thought it would have been better if you, if there was a memo with an explanation on it.
I agree.
Because I looked at it and going, wow, what are we doing?
What are we doing?
Because, number one, I didn't know, um, of our earlier meeting and then this, so I, it just kind of took me by surprise.
Oh, he did put a memo.
There is a memo.
But, um...
But the committee said that it should be four.
Yeah, it's just the pros and cons, it's not really a descrip, description of what we were doing. Yes, you're right, the committee recommendation, it is there.
And the curious part is, that's how many acres Levona builder wanted to have as open space.
This is pro and con.
In their proposal on page two.
Well, the other ones like that also.
Anyway, it's just curious.
The person I was not pleased with, the four acres, when I saw that, it was unacceptable.
Okay, so have, are we having an amendment to make it a minimum of five?
That's, that's on the table right now to vote for.
Who, who made the motion?
I made the motion, Otto supported it.
Okay, so we have a motion to make it a minimum of five, Bellinger and Otto. Okay, any more discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Roll call.
Roll call. Manley? Yes. Zelenak?
No.
Dockett?
No.
Chick?
Yes.
Is that, um, Bellinger?
Um, yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Chockley? Yes. Okay. Did it pass?
Yeah, I wasn't keeping track. Five to two.
Now we have to go to our first, first motion.
Okay, main motion.
And who was the one that?
Bellinger, Otto.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, Ms. Bellinger has made the motion to adopt Resolution 19-615 now as amended with a second by Ms. Otto. Okay, roll call.
No.
Chick?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Dockett?
No.
Okay, that passed five to two, thank you. Yeah, Dockett and Zelnak, okay.
So, um, actually, I'd like to make a motion that we engage the Wasnaught County Community Parks with the North Village Committee to see if they would like to partner with us on a park, be it a minimum of five acres, to get their input.
Uh-huh.
It's a motion I'd like to make, and made it.
Just to share...
Maybe they'll partner.
Just have a, just have a discussion?
Yeah, see if they would want to partner with us in whatever acreage of the village green.
I think I would prefer going to the committee.
That's what I said with the committee.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to have, well, I guess, maybe, how would you? Well, anyway, my motion is that the committee, um, talk with Wasnaught County Parks about, um, partnership with building a park at that site. That's my motion.
Motion by Zelnak, support by Chick. Um, I, I don't know, discussion, I, I think it's a little early because we, although I would love it.
I think we should wait on that idea, personally. Let's just, I think maybe after a couple of months, we'll see what goes on.
Yeah, 'cause I'm concerned about what the, we would attempt to get a DNR grant for that area too, so it might be stronger if we have the county involved with it, in which case...
They might help us apply for it.
Pardon?
They might help us apply for it.
Right, exactly, so...
I think any type of discovery is still good, um, it, it just opens the options.
Yep.
Doesn't mean that you're doing it, it just means you're, you're looking into it and researching it.
I, I would appreciate that committee...
Yes.
...giving their input. Okay.
So I'd like to add something else. I'd like to remind people that we do have a millage out there through county, the Wasnaught County Parks that we all participate in, and in 2018, the money that was, um, distributed from collecting from Northville Township to the Wasnaught Parks was 157,836 dollars and sixty-eight cents. And the millages are for 10 years, so if you multiply that approximately by 10 years, we're talking about 1.5 million dollars that our residents have contributed to the parks and rucks. So I think it would be good to engage them and maybe get some of that money back. And I know they have, like, we have the North, um, Knoller Preserve on Knoller and Seven Mile, and they have another preserve, so we are, but I think, um, you know, we might be able to even get more because I don't know if we've gotten all the money that we have put in to get that, so that's why I think it would be a good idea.
Okay, so we have a motion to engage the, um, Wasnaught County Parks. Is it Parks?
Oh, yeah, the Wasnaught County Parks and Rec, I think is their name, through the North Village Committee.
Committee, okay.
Did you get a support already? A support if you didn't?
Yeah, Ms. Chick. And, uh, we'll just invite them to our next meeting. Hopefully they'll come. Okay, um...
Did we vote?
No, we're going to. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
Yes.
Okay, six to one. Thank you. Okay, uh, the next item, oh, gosh. Can, can we, um...
No!
Yes.
No! We made a motion, we made a motion.
I know, but the problem is, we have a couple items that we have to get through tonight.
No!
We take an assessment of what we have to do tonight, then?
Uh, the health insurance would be...
Do we have to do that? Do we even have the numbers to make a decision on that? But let's talk about it. Which ones do we have to do?
Uh, we, well, we don't even have to do a bunch of them.
Well, it's open enrollment still, and you have up until probably, what, the end of November?
They start in November 1st or something like that.
December 1st is where the coverage starts.
Yeah.
So for you all to make a decision in time for the employees to be briefed on it, that's the concern, the closer you get to that.
Okay.
Well, my...
So we don't have time.
So my concern is, I don't know what it's gonna cost us based on the memo, but anyway. What other one do we have to do?
Move to number four, then?
Pardon?
Well, leapfrog through the agenda?
Well, I just...
We don't have to do, do we have to do the budget amendments tonight?
Well, we can do it really quick if nobody has any issues. Issues?
Do we have to do the budget amendments tonight?
No.
Township manager?
No.
Then I would table that. I'll make a motion to table the budget amendments.
Okay. Yeah, we should do health insurance. Okay, so we have a motion to table the, um, budget amendment by Zelnak and support by Chick. Okay, all in favor of tabling till the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, put that off. Okay, the next item is the health insurance.
Do we have to do that tonight?
Um, okay.
Since the, since the health insurance runs December through November 30th, you're giving them only 30 days. So the next board meeting wouldn't be until the 12th. You're only giving them two weeks to determine what their health insurance is.
Should we make a motion to look into this, then?
Um, I'm gonna make a motion to, um, adopt Resolution 19-614, the medical insurance opt-out of the hard caps.
Support?
Motion by Chockley, support by Bellinger. Any discussion on that?
What about three?
We're gonna, what do you mean, three?
We gotta get back to three, we didn't talk three yet.
Oh, we're skipping three?
Not, not for long.
Okay. I will make a motion to skip number three until, unless we have time to table.
We, we already voted at the last meeting that this would be on the agenda.
Okay.
And you knew that.
Yep, so...
That's why it's there. Okay, so I guess...
But now, but now, you're being, now you're being a jerk.
I will come back to it. We're not skipping three.
We'll come back to it, then.
Let's go through, we're not skipping three.
But there is a motion on the table for the...
Yeah, for the opt-out.
For the opt-out.
Okay.
And insurance.
And, okay, so the motion was by Chockley and support by Bellinger. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Dockett is opposed. That passes six, one. Okay.
Who supported that?
Chick.
Okay.
No, Bellinger, sorry, Chockley-Bellinger, sorry. All right, all I have to say is about this health insurance, it's the same as last year.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the, the same plans, the same, it just ended up costing 9.2% more than the prior year.
Should I approve, make a motion to approve health insurance plans for 2020?
Okay, motion by...
As provided.
Bellinger, support by Chick. This is for number two, okay. Um, any discussion?
Yes.
What?
I don't want to hear 2%. I wanna hear 9,000, 15,000, 20,000. I wanna know how much more we're paying, so don't give me the 2% deal.
Okay.
I agree.
So I, I think that we need to have a figure, not a 2%, a total figure, thank you.
I agree.
Ms. Patrick couldn't get it for you? I mean...
No, actually, Jennifer put together the chart, I emailed it out to everybody, and I delivered it to Mr. Dockett. And I know it was today, but I'm following up on questions today.
Well, it's today, we're supposed to get it last Thursday, sir.
No one asked for the detail.
Well, we don't...
Let me, let me point out that when you say something has to be complete for the agenda, and then I get seven different views of what constitutes complete.
Oh, you poor thing, you. All we wanna do is we wanna figure. We always wanna figure, always. You don't have to think about it.
Table it if you want.
Okay.
So what is the figure?
Can you read it off?
I thought you were gonna table it. You want the figure? The silver-blue HSA went from 141 to 152. These, the, uh, simple-blue HSA bronze went from 97 to 103. The HSA contribution stayed the same at 50,565. The dental went up, or went down, I mean, from 17,934 to 17,822. Blue Cross Blue Shield Vision went from 2250.04 to 2404, 05.04. And the opt-out incentive, we have eight people that have opted out at a price of 4,000 each, so that's stayed at 32,000. The bottom line is there's a difference of 17,000 between last year and the proposed plan, and the net effect of all that was a 4.97 percent.
Okay.
It doesn't match 9.2 percent.
Yep, and, and we really won't know until the employees choose what they want to have, how it's gonna impact the budget. We won't know.
Oh, we know it's 17,000, didn't they say? More? Is that what he said?
I heard...
That's if everything stayed the same, then it'd be 17,000. But it's always a moving target because people change their minds as which programs they want.
17,000 tells me a whole lot more than 2% was.
Yeah. Well, I agree, you have, you have a point, Mr. Dockett. Okay, so can we vote on this now?
So I just, I mean, again, I will reiterate with Mr. Dockett, it is good to have numbers. It's, I mean, was the police chief contacted on this and the impact that it may have on his budget? And to tell you the truth, I don't really know if there's truly gonna be an increase based on the numbers just read, because it says from actual to actual, it went up 4.9%. I believe we budgeted an increase of 7% in the budget. So these are things to me that needs to be ironclad to know what we're voting for. And I'm not sure what I voted for, if it's actually gonna be an increase to the budget or not, based on what Mr. Ainge just provided. So, okay. Ms. Otto, you have something?
Yeah, so what, I'm trying to understand what the recommendation is. You're looking for to go to simply blue. Is that what the proposal is?
I thought there was no change.
They're, they're keeping them both, um, the simply blue, silver, PPO.
So, you're keeping two plans?
Yeah.
So, you're looking at, which ones are you looking at? 'Cause this was confusing.
On the front.
I have, I'm looking at this thing. Okay, I don't have that. Oh, okay. So, one of the things you have to consider, too, is the, um, is the out-of-pocket. So, which one are you considering? The simply blue at 27? So, currently, today, you don't have an out-of-pocket, and with the, the new one, you have a 20% out-of-pocket.
Um, which one are you looking at? Oh, we're in the proposed renewal, right?
Yeah, well, I'm looking at-
On the first page.
I'm looking at these.
First page.
That's what's proposed. Okay, that's why I'm asking, 'cause
Right.
You have all these other plans that were attached, and I'm looking at what, what-
Yep.
So, because my background is in health insurance, I look at the whole thing. It's not just the cost, it's the cost to the employee that you also have to look at.
Mm-hmm.
What's their deductible? What's their out-of-pocket?
Well, uh- So, the bronze went up $300 for a single person.
Okay.
Yeah, and $600 for a family, for the deductible. But it stayed the same for a single, oh, for simply blue silver.
And all of these are way above what the government sets. All of them are way above what the government says we should be paying. That's why I don't like the opt-out. I don't think we should.
Well, it's the same plan as, as they currently have. I would've been interested in going to the HMO, but apparently, the doctors aren't the same. A lot of them don't have doctors that are in the HMO.
No, I'm in an HMO.
I'm in an HMO.
And it's very easy.
I know, it's very easy. So, I don't know why the doctors of our employees, some of them are not in the HMO, because almost all doctors will take the HMO. Yep. Yeah.
Yeah, all right, let's go.
We have a mo, let's see, we had the motion, right? So, let's see, Bellinger, Chick, to adopt the HMO, no, the simply blue HSA PPO silver and the simply blue HSA PPO bronze. Correct?
My motion was to approve health insurance plans for 2020, yes.
Okay.
And we didn't put a figure in there.
That's correct. All in, do we need a roll call?
Yes.
A roll call.
Are we gonna put a figure in?
Nope, we don't know it.
We don't know it. Yeah, we can't.
You can't have a figure.
Yeah.
Can always have a figure. Approximately. A range.
17,000. Are you ready to vote?
Ready.
Okay. Manley, yes. Bellinger?
Yes.
Zelenak?
No.
Dockett?
No.
Chockley?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Thank you. That passed five-two. Okay, now we have a, a motion to, for the contributions to the employee health savings.
What is two-thirds of seven?
What?
This takes two-thirds of seven, it says here.
I think you probably got it.
Two-thirds on the board, it says two, on this video. It says on this page.
Oh, for the opt-out.
It has to be two-thirds of seven, it says.
I think you got it.
Five is good. Five is good. That number adds.
Well, see, I need a brain like you, but I didn't know how much to, I didn't know what two-thirds of seven was.
We're good.
Well, they made it just by the skin of their-
I'll make a motion to, um, determine the township contributions to the employee health savings account, um, the same as last year, so.
I'll support.
Okay. Motion by Chockley, support by Otto. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. That passes seven-zero. All right, now, um-
I'd like to move to consider the contract extension with Thomas Duke for the sale of 75 Barker.
I am going home, and I am going home because you have lied to me. So, I-
Again, does this have to be done today?
You, we, we talked about this, number three, and you just go right by it? And broke all your promises.
So, I would say, can we move past this?
That is not right.
Well, right now, you would have to table everything.
Why don't we just extend the meeting for a half hour? We're here. Let's get some business done. I move to extend the meeting, our meeting to close at 10 o'clock. Support. Motion by Bellinger, support by Chockley.
He's leaving anyway, so.
That's okay.
Are you leaving?
We can talk about building without him.
Yeah, well, you, you don't do what you say you're gonna do.
Well, maybe we'll get to that tonight. I'm hoping we do.
So, what if we, um, go back and talk about building right now, before you leave, Mr. Dockett? I think we need your input on that.
Okay, well, I do-
We can do that right now.
Can we do that, and we'll extend the meeting until 10?
Okay.
As Ms. Bellinger had said.
Okay.
Okay. So, we agreed that we're gonna extend the meeting till 10?
Yes.
And we're gonna go back to number three right now?
I just, I just want us to do what we said we were gonna do.
It doesn't need to be voted on, since you already had a vote on it.
We're already, we're already gonna discuss it.
Let's go. Okay. All right, let's talk about the building department issue.
We have to make a, we have to vote. We have to have a vote. You already voted to end at 9:30.
Yeah, so let's have a vote.
Um, we had a motion to extend it till 10. Bellinger, Chockley, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. That passed seven-zero.
So, I had a question about this item, um, the, the building department that we're gonna discuss now.
Okay.
Um, I understand that the building department is not supposed to be a money-making department. It's supposed to pay for itself, correct?
Correct.
Does that also mean that it's not supposed to cost the township, correct?
Correct.
So, our fee changes should reflect the actual costs for doing business, having a building department? If we do everything right? Okay. And having a building department here may be beneficial to people trying to do building and business here, perhaps?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's just some things I need to clear, I need to understand, make sure I had a good image of this situation. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Ms. Manley.
From what I recall, I think since the three years that we've been here, we've been asking for a review of the building department fees.
Right, yep.
We were supposed to do.
Fee, fee schedule.
Right.
Yep.
We were supposed to do. So-
And when you say we, who's the we?
Oh, the board.
The board.
The township.
We have asked for it, but is that something we review?
Yes.
Once we get it?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, something that we should have, and if we know we're in the negative, it's something that should be a priority.
Yes.
To get our fees up to where they should be, so we're not in the red.
Is that what this provides us?
That would be point number one. Review our fee schedule, do not make us in the red.
I like that.
What is number one?
Just to review our fee schedule, to see why we are in the red on this. And we've been asking for three years to do this.
I know we, we increased our fee schedules one, one, about six, six years ago. And that was the last time they were increased.
Right.
And I don't even know if we were, we were competitive, let's say, competitive with other townships at the time when we did it.
Okay, Ms. Chick?
We compared to other communities, and we weren't the highest, we weren't the lowest, we went to the mid-range. And, um, but it's been a long time. Uh, our building department has gotten much busier, and we have not increased our fees, so we need to take a look at that. And, um, I mean, we can talk about discussing whether or not we should keep it here or send it out. I agree with Ms. Bellinger that it, you know, you can get permits online, uh, if you go to the county, but there are many things that our residents come to the township for that require multiple visits, multiple visits, and we'd have to be sending them out to Washtenaw, you know, multiple times to get something done. Um, I think our first order of business would be to, uh, look at the fees right away. I know we have a full, um, agenda already, um, but at least before the end of the year, and establish those fees, and then talk about it, so.
Ms. Manley?
I think while we're reviewing the fees, to kind of-
Bless you. Bless you.
To, um, piggyback on what Ms. Zelenak said earlier about people coming in and not getting the service expected. I mean, are we short-staffed in the building department? Do we need another, right, do we need another person that needs to get, you know, that salary included in our fees?
If we're gonna do that, we would have to consider the fee charges to reflect that.
So, that needs to be part of the study on the fees.
Exactly.
So, we should have a staff and analysis done?
I think we've asked for that, too.
Okay.
I agree.
Yes.
Yeah. I would like us to look at, um, combining our services with, um, Carlisle-Wartman. They provide building, they provide building services. And they're just down the street, so it's not far.
La Kena provides building services, too.
I know, but you're not just-
We provided you with an estimate for that.
You're just not down the street, but, you know, so. Well, we could get a competitive bid for, for, I don't know.
My turn.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Dockett.
We are losing $1,000 a week in the building department. $50,000 this year. Next year, we will be losing $2,000 a week, $100,000. The county will do our building inspections and take people to court and make everything for free, for nothing. Zero.
Okay.
They don't have to, they, they can go there five days a week. Uh, you know, the manager and the management report this, this week says that when somebody comes in to see somebody and they're not here, they get upset 'cause they have to come back another day. No, that's a management problem. These people should be cross-trained, cross-trained in our departments, but they're not. So, so, anyway, it's just so elementary, so simple. We don't have to get rid of the people we got. Maybe, I think we should try it, I'd like to have us try it for six months or a year. Leave our, leave our department the way it is. But transfer for six months or a year. We're not gonna be able to raise our prices $1,000 a week, are we? I mean, the county, the county has not raised their prices in 13 years. And we're talking about maybe hiring another person for the building department? When we're already going upside down, $1,000 a week? It just, it just bothers me that, that I'm the only one that can see this. I mean, why wouldn't we hire the county to do it? They're professionals.
Ms. Manley?
I guess to follow that question, then, we need to analyze why we're losing money.
We added staff, I mean, we have Vidya here, and, um, one day a week. And we aren't charging for that.
But that's not the building department, is it?
Does that-
Zoning?
I don't know.
Where does that fall under?
Maybe we should start charging for that.
You're talking about Vidya, that's zoning.
Okay, so, okay.
You can't use building department fees for zoning or planning.
So, the only one that really is being, the only one that's real, is Mary.
Yeah, we moved her full-time.
No, Mary, Mary gets 65%.
No, not anymore.
Not anymore.
What does she get?
It's 100%.
Okay, 100%?
And that's the-
The manager gets 10%? He gets a million dollar, or a hundred thousand a year?
A million.
A hundred thousand a year?
And I'm gonna take that job.
You gotta raise.
He gets $10,000 a year. Mary gets 7, 100% of her wages. The gal that's on the desk gets 10%. And nobody, none of them can, can write, can, can give out a permit. None of them can do inspections. We're, we're wasting our money on these people. They can't, they can't give you a C.O.
Then the other part of, of the building department's probably all vendors, though.
Oh, what?
Oh, yeah.
Vendors.
Yeah, we farm our-
Yeah, inspectors.
Like inspectors, that type of thing, are vendors.
So-
Are subcontractors.
Could we do a flow?
But their fees cover them, they should. Um, Ms. Bellinger?
Besides the obvious, okay, they would have to travel to, um, to, to the county for, for the building permits and such. What, um, what other advantage, what would be, I'm just trying to be more, just trying to keep it open here. What is any benefit or positive to having it here? I mean, okay, aside from that, we already covered it, it's close to home, they could come here. It's closer than going to the county. What other advantage is it to having it in-house? As opposed to, as Mr. Dockett suggests, the county?
Six or seven other communities can't afford to do it either. That's why they use the county.
I'm just asking, what would we lose? Is there something simple, a couple simple answers to that question? Anybody can point out, say, what would be a detriment to?
Well, I, I don't, I wouldn't know the answer either. So, I would like to know what are the other counties that are using? I mean, other townships that are using the county.
You'd like to know what?
What the other townships or communities that are using the county?
We got, we got the list from our manager.
We had it at one point.
We probably should have Mary here to answer those questions.
No, maybe.
Mary wouldn't know, but he knows, he, he gave us all that information when we talked about the last one.
Do you know who they are?
I know Augusta.
Who uses the county?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably two-thirds of the townships in the county. I believe-
In Washtenaw County?
I believe Salem Township does. Uh, Webster. And there's a lot of other ones to the west and south. But they have a list, as I gave you before, that's on their website, that lists which communities do or do not use the county.
So, could- Yeah, it lists here that they have Augusta Township, City of Dexter, Celine Township, Scioto Township, Lodi Township, Webster Township, and the electrical inspections for the city of Celine.
Well, do we wanna make a motion to consider?
That's quite a bit.
Do we want a motion for additional information, or are we gonna actually do some kind of action on any of this?
To get a fee study.
You wanna work on getting the fee struck, fee schedule first? Or do we wanna actually consider you having the county do this for six months or a year?
So, I have a thought is, what-
It's an all or none.
Can we do, can we do a flow chart? What does it look like at our current process?
Don't have one.
Well, what, and maybe that's part of the problem, if we can't flow it. And then, what, to me, what would it look like if we went to the county? And then, the other option to me was, what would it look like if we brought it all in-house? 'Cause, again, I hear all the time that, you know, it just, communication isn't done well, you know, get an email, there isn't, and I don't know if the county's gonna do it any better. But I'd like to see the flow chart of, you know, what would the citizens look like if they had to use the county? What's our current process? We can start there. We can start there.
And that was my question, too, is send people to the county considering all the, and I'm just bringing it, putting it out there. What is their timeline in getting things done because they're much busier than we are?
Right, so what's our timeline, you know, what's our current process?
They're on, they're on twenty, they're on five days a week. And I got four buildings probably that I built in this township. And I, and at that time, we didn't have a building department. Went to the county. But nowadays, you don't even have to go to the county. You just make out your, make up for the permit and they send it to you.
It might be quite a simplification to consider the county. I mean, if it doesn't work, we go back to what we're doing, and if we don't-
I'd like to see the timeline, too.
You can't, you can't come back.
You can't come back?
Once you go, you can't come back.
How, how is that possible? Where is that a written rule?
I talk to them, you know.
And you can't leave?
Thirty days, you can give them thirty-day notice.
No, because they take over all of your, but they take over all of it.
And you can't come back?
Yes.
Very difficult.
You have no control over anything.
Yeah.
Mr. Lippens, can you tell me the impact of?
That seems impossible. You can't come back.
Having, going to the county as opposed to doing the building area in the office?
Once you go, they'll not gonna release your records and not let you take it over.
Let's let Ms. Chick ask a question.
Well, I think one of the big issues is just the quickness of service.
This guy's looking for the job, he, he already said he doesn't.
All right, stop.
I don't, I don't finish asking you.
Well, let's get his opinion.
Let's get his opinion.
This guy, he, yeah, he's, oh, I do that, too.
I do, yeah.
He does, let's get his opinion.
There's no question about it. My firm provides building services. Mr. Ains has asked us for information on it, and I've provided it. We do very well at providing building services for lots of townships, as do many of our competitors. One of the advantages is that there is a revenue source for the township. I think Mr. Dockett pointing out that you're losing money is a very good thing to look at. You have to look at it. When we do building services, we bring in revenue for the people that we work with, and we provide good services. I know everyone is very happy with Vidia and the work she does in the zoning department. If we were to bring our building people to the township, we would turn your revenue deficit around, and we would continue to improve the services in the township. And that's what we do. We provide service. That's why I'm in this business, to provide good service.
And I also, can I also ask, do you have, in your agreements, do you also have standard levels of performance in your agreements?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and we often provide building inspectors on-site if you want our release.
If they don't meet standard levels of performance, then there's penalties.
The question is, if this is supposed to be a revenue-neutral, how can you bring in revenue? Is this a revenue-neutral, the building department's not supposed to make money, it's just supposed to cover its costs? Not be a money-making source for the township? I guess that's, maybe I misunderstood your statement?
The, the revenue source is to cover your costs. That's what I mean, as opposed to taking a loss and providing services at a, at a deficit to your general funds.
Do you do it for free, sir?
Do you work for free?
Do you, do you, no, but the county does.
No, they get, no, they don't work for free, they get fees.
They charge fees to your residents.
They, they work for nothing. They, they are not charging us one penny.
So, where do we go? So, I'll make a motion that we look at our fee structure, under our current structure, to make sure we're no longer in a deficit.
Deadline. We need a deadline to get it back.
Okay, and, maybe-
Last meeting in November.
January thirtieth or something?
And December?
First meeting in December.
We only have three days left.
And who is doing that?
I beg your pardon, couldn't you hear?
I think it would be started by our township manager and-
Okay, that's-
Okay, so a deadline is to have it at the December meeting, or the first meeting in January? Which one?
First meeting in January.
Okay, we'll do the first, ah, man. First meeting in January. To be led in-
Or sooner.
Or sooner, but no, well, so I make a motion that we look at our fee structure to make sure we're not running in a deficit by the first meeting in, or by the, at least by the first meeting in January. To be led by and done, led by the township manager.
I'll support.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Zelnok and support by Ms. Chick. Discussion. Mr. Ains is sitting there wanting to say something.
One of my concerns when you say that is then you put other things in, like this item, you said had to be the third item on the agenda tonight. Well, then you put other things in as you go along. And like this study of the building department, you asked for about four or five months ago, and I gave it to you, and then you wanted more, and I gave you more, and then I gave you more, and then it got tabled about three times in a row, so I left it off the agenda. So the question is, if I put the effort of staff to get this done by the first meeting in January, are you gonna have an opening on it? Because like tonight's agenda-
We'll make sure, because it's a deficit.
Because tonight's agenda, we had about three times as many items that we could've done because you've got a backlog of things, because you've been having this marijuana thing tie it up for so long.
So, from my perspective is-
Did we make that motion?
I hear a lot of complaints from everybody that I, or most people when I go on in public about how difficult it is to get something through the township. We need to address that. I don't know the answer, and this isn't giving me the answer other than it says it's gonna cost me more, and I don't even know if it's gonna be more effective. But one thing I do know is we are running a deficit in the building department, and that needs to stop. And I, I just don't know how to make the building department. And please, you know, Ms. Byrd, this has no reflection on her. I know she's, works very hard. Because I don't know about the process. How do we make the process better for our people, for our employees? I, I don't know the answer, and this isn't helping me with the answer.
So one of the recommendations that I'd like to make is that we do have a committee. We did a committee for the, for the employee manual, and we went through it with the township attorney, with our labor attorney and everything. Granted, it hasn't been approved yet, but-
It's close.
But it's very close. So I think the, the same thing we would probably have to do is just form a committee. The township manager, the controller, and two board members to be on that committee to try to get some of these things answered. A staffing analysis, do we need more people? Do we not need more people? Workflow, what is it gonna look like in-house? What's the current workflow? What are some of the efficiencies? Outsource, what is it gonna look like if we sent it to Washtenaw County? What would it look like if we had a vendor do it? You know, another independent contractor do it. These things need to be answered, and I appreciate the information, but I need the information a little bit differently so we can start comparing apples to apples.
I agree.
All right, so, we have a motion, right?
So, I would like to make a, a motion to have-
We got one about the fees.
She has one about the fees.
By December, and then we go to that one.
Okay.
Is that okay, Madam?
That's, sure.
We have a motion to review the fee schedule by the first meeting in January by the manager.
So it was supported, right?
That was it, yeah. Zelnok, and who supported that?
Chick.
Chick. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes, seven-zero. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Otto.
So I would like to make a motion to have a committee to help move this along a little bit faster, to include the fees, include the staffing analysis, and the workflows as part of the- Okay, a committee meeting, or a committee formed to include the, the fees for analysis, the staffing analysis, and the workflow for in-house and outsource. The committee would consist of the township manager, the controller, and two board members.
What about Ms. Byrd? Ms. Byrd? Yeah?
Well-
Ms. Byrd is so busy right now, but I mean-
I mean, the, the thing, you can get her input, but I think what you need is somebody, is, is an outside to give all the information. I mean, you could, the stuff that we're looking for is, is facts, and I'm, and-
Maybe we interview Ms. Byrd and, you know, someone puts it together.
And it's not that I have anything against Mary, doesn't bring some motions into it. So I'd like to look at the facts first, and then we-
Not to mention she's swamped. But maybe we interview her, get the thing, so she's not feeling compelled to put the schedules together.
Right.
We gather the data from her.
Okay. All right.
I don't wanna ignore Ms. Byrd, I just think, you know, as a consultant, might be best.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do you have it, Ms. Lembo? To look at fees?
The building department.
Oh, to review the fee schedule.
Already did that one.
Staffing analysis and workflow for in-house and outsource.
Okay.
I agree, we need to do-
All right.
Sounds good.
Good?
And you had the-
I didn't get a support.
Zelnok, right?
I support.
Okay.
But you had more to your motion, though. It was about the township manager.
Oh, yes, the township manager, a controller, and two board members.
Okay. That's correct. Okay. All right. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes, seven-zero. Okay, who are the two board members? Who's got time?
I guess I'll give it a try.
I can help.
I'll look into something, see if I can learn something.
You're gonna do it?
You and I?
Yeah, yes.
We can start that way, anyway?
Okay. Zelnok and Bellinger.
You know, an alternate Ms. Chick.
Zelnok.
Yeah, Bellinger and Zelnok.
We'll see how it goes.
All right.
Well, all right, movement.
Woo-hoo.
Okay, do it by phone.
So, are we now to item number six? Consider contract extension with Thomas Duke for the sale of seventy-five Barker.
Are you making a motion?
I am making a motion to consider, to accept a contract extension with Thomas Duke for the sale of seventy-five Barker.
Okay, we have a motion by Bellinger and support by Otto. Now, we have discussion.
I have discussion.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Chick.
Can we just wait until spring? Or, you're not gonna do anything over the winter. Might as well list it.
You can list it.
Yeah, we just keep it listed.
Well, I would prefer we're not selling the parking lot, and now, the current one sells the parking lot. I would also not mind if it got sent to the DDA.
Was that in my last contract?
No. Well, you, it was all included, to sell the parking lot with seventy-five Barker, and I think that's a horrible mistake.
So considering the time is, does, when does this have to be decided?
It-
It's almost ten o'clock.
We don't have to sign up yet, do we?
Do we have to decide it now? When's the contract end again, Ms. Ains?
It's October twenty-third, I believe.
When did it end, Ms. Ains?
But I would imagine they would agree to an extension if you came back later.
In November? If, if somebody knocked on their door, they wouldn't turn them away, I'm sure.
So if, if I recall, the, the parking lot part, we still didn't have the legalities. We didn't have any information on the legalities that we could separate the building from the parking lot. And that still needs to be provided to us.
Well, we've got Mr. Lippens sitting there. Can we split the seventy-five Barker off?
We talked about this quite a bit.
No.
We talked about it quite a bit, and basically, it renders it saleless, unsaleable.
The building would be useless without the parking lot.
We went over that.
You could certainly grant yourself an easement to use that parking, and then sell it as part of, you know, with that easement or encumbrance attached to it. I would think that that would be easier than splitting the property into two. And you, because you would wanna retain parking for the purchaser of the site as well.
Okay, we just can't give the parking away. Ms. Chick?
So, I think this requires more discussion beyond the point of selling it, and beyond the point of extending even the, the contract we're currently under. I would prefer, in fact, I'm going to make a motion that we-
We got one on the floor.
Take this up in the spring, March twenty-first. And in the meantime-
Well, we have a motion on the-
We have the motion on the floor, though. Can we take a vote on that?
Yep.
We can just, okay.
A motion to extend the current agreement.
Okay. All in favor of extending?
Roll call.
Roll call? Okay, roll call.
Did Mr. Dockett, are you the second?
No, Otto. Ms. Bellinger or Otto?
And, and we're extending.
Right.
For six months.
Okay.
Okay, we need a roll call vote?
Yes, we need a roll call vote.
Yeah.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Chick?
No.
Zelnok?
No.
Chakly?
No.
Don't answer for her. Dockett.
Sorry, why don't you, I thought you were gonna call me.
Pay attention.
Pay attention, it's a test.
Surprise.
Dockett?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Ah, shoot. Okay, four, four-three, it passed.
Okay, moving on.
I think we should give it to the DDA to, to repurpose that building and deal with the parking lot.
That wasn't the motion.
It would be very difficult for us to pick out.
Can we move to consider purchase offer of township-owned property on Coil Road, number seven?
I'd like to just table number seven. It's gonna take more discussion.
Okay, not if you're voting no. Okay, we're, I moved to table number seven.
Oh, I already moved to-
She, she has a motion.
Consider the purchase offer of the township-owned property on Coil Road.
You're correct.
This is gonna be fast, you're gonna do that, aren't you? Did you, did you make your motion?
I just did.
Uh, second it.
Okay.
Support.
To accept it.
To accept it?
Okay.
Huh?
What did you say?
No, I, I'm second it.
To accept the offer?
No, second it. One, two.
We have to make a motion.
She made the motion.
What's the motion?
I moved to accept the contract, I'm sorry, I moved to-
Did you make it to accept it?
Yes.
The offer?
Yeah.
Oh, heavens, no.
Well, we have to vote yes or no, that's what we do.
Okay, she made-
You make the offer, then you say yes or no.
Well, we, we can't sell this to them for three hundred bucks?
Well, that's why we're gonna make a motion.
It's the will of the board now, we can vote.
Okay.
So who seconded it?
Dockett.
Dockett seconded it.
I take back everything.
Yeah, he takes it back.
You can vote, the, the seconded it, no, no. The maker has to vote yes.
You can still vote no.
But he may not want a second now that he knows that it was to accept and not to consider.
What? The maker has to vote yes?
Oh, well, then I will remove my motion.
Okay, make a motion to vote no. I will make a motion to turn down this purchase offer.
That's why we shouldn't have meetings past ten.
Okay, motion by Chakly, support by Bellinger, to turn down-
Yeah, the first motion has to be rescinded or, or voted on.
I retract my motion.
And she didn't get a second, really, either, so.
There was no second.
Yeah.
All right, so we're going to rescind it, but we have to come back with it, right? Or not accept it, whatever.
Marlene made a motion to not accept it.
I have a motion to turn down the purchase offer.
And I support it?
Support by Bellinger. Okay, any more discussion?
Yes. I don't think we should sell this, it doesn't, I think that our manager, I, I talked to him earlier, he said him, and the ordinance officer was there, and they got a bunch of junky cars down there on some of them now. So, I think it needs to be cleaned up down there. Are, are you guys gonna try to do something, sir?
Whose cars are they?
Who knows? On the, on the property.
I know the township owns the property.
Oh, on Coil?
Yeah, unless we have, we're doing a used car lot.
There's cars?
Yeah.
Is that right, sir? Did you go down there?
If I could respond, Mr. Dockett. The ordinance officer and I were there Monday, and we took pictures of junk, and we took pictures of cars on the property, the township. And besides that, we were recommending against selling it anyway because the gentleman offered three hundred dollars. The appraisal price, according to the assessor, is seven hundred, which would mean market value would be fourteen hundred. So even if there weren't any other issues, I'd be recommending against you taking it anyway.
Very good, thank you, sir.
All right.
But, but we do need, we are responsible for, the property is ours, so we, we need to get it, somebody down there looking at. I, I, I was there tonight, before the meeting. I was there tonight, before the meeting.
Can we get somebody to tow the vehicles off the property?
I don't know if they're on, I don't know exactly where the lines are.
We should tag them first.
We'll follow up with the ordinance officer if you could leave it at that.
Are they plated?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe a private, private property sign or something.
I'm gonna call the vote here.
Yep, please.
All in favor of turning down this offer, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. That passed seven-zero.
I would like to just make a comment is, when we have property that is kind of, okay, it's not property in Horseshoe Lake that's flooded and you can't get to, but properties such as this, I really think, and you can look with the insurance, we should probably have a no trespassing sign.
Right.
That it isn't, you know, used, and I would like, Ms. Aines, do I need to make a motion on that? I think we need to check with the insurance company. Like I said, if it's accessible and people can get to it readily, I think we need to put a no trespassing sign unless we want people to use it. Yeah.
I don't think you need a motion. We'll follow up as we intended to do.
All right.
Or also for sale sign.
Or a for sale sign. That would work too.
That would be better.
Can I make a motion to recommend close the township offices during the week of December, from twenty-third, December twenty-third to twenty-seventh, twenty-nineteen?
Support.
What was that?
I'll let Ms. Manley support that.
I made a motion to, that we close the township offices during the week of December twenty-third to twenty-seventh, twenty-nineteen. It's item number eight.
That is a terrible, terrible thing.
Yeah, so I will tell you, the one issue that I have with this is that you've had people that have taken PTO all through the year, and now you're telling them, like, two months ahead of time that, or a month and a half ahead of time, that they either take their PTO or they don't get paid. Because some people didn't manage their PTO throughout the year. If you're gonna do this, you do this in a year in advance, so people can manage their PTO better.
Okay, let's see. Manley?
Ms. Aines, have you spoken to the employees on this?
Yes, I have.
And what are their feelings?
They're in favor of it.
You name it, Ms.?
Of course.
I didn't take a vote per se, but in staff meeting, it seemed like everyone was supportive of it.
My personal opinion, I mean, to me, it's also good for staff morale, being closed that week. I mean, personally, where I worked, we're shut down that week. I know Pittsfield Township is, and then if I'm looking for other job opportunities, that's sometimes a make it or break it. Having that week off is invaluable. And I'm one of those people, like Jackie said, that did not budget my PTO time. So, yes, I'll be taking four days off, Christmas unpaid, but to me, it's worth it.
So, how many people would be affected by not getting paid?
That I haven't asked anybody yet, but I can check the PTO list. I think it's primarily a question of part-timers, if they have enough time or not. I think the full-time people do. And as I've indicated before, whether you approve this or not, if the office is open, I'm gonna be here those days anyway. If the office is closed, of course, I wouldn't be, because I feel like that there's not enough people to do it without having me as a backup for them. Otherwise, we get too many people trying to get off at the same time.
Okay, Ms. Chick?
I appreciate the fact that people want that whole week off, but I think we do a disservice to the community to not have our offices open during the week, too. They're...
They take that week off, too.
I mean, we're here to serve the community. You know, if they, if you want to do a skeleton staff where people can pick and choose who wants to work it or not, but I don't think that's a good idea to close the office for a whole week. We're supposed to be here for the community. I get the Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. That's all I am.
Take a vote.
Okay. Anybody down, Mr. Dockett?
You're absolutely right.
Ten oh-seven.
The people, they are maybe off, they want to come in and do their business, and they're gonna be closed up for a week. Now, if somebody wants to take time off and not get paid, but for them to be able to get paid or to make up the time, you know, this is, this is going beyond the pale, in my opinion. I could not ever support anything like that. First, the next year, they'll want to take, might as well take New Year's week, might as well close up for two weeks. You got the same holidays the next week, so... No, that can't happen. We have responsibility to the public.
The issue we had brought up was only for the one year, because you've got the split between Monday you'd be open and Thursday, Friday.
Five days, closing for five days.
If you could let me finish, that you've got a leap year in two-twenty, and suddenly the holidays are the Thursday, Friday.
I got the memo, I got the memo.
Okay, well, it's whatever the board wants to do, but you'd also stress you wanted people to use up PTO time. And so, this was one option that was mentioned, so whatever you want to do.
W O P, I used to call it, without pay. I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Well, it says that in here.
Vote?
Yeah. It says without pay if you don't have PTO.
Okay, it's after ten. Are we gonna vote on this item? Yes.
Let's vote.
Okay. All in favor, roll call.
Roll call vote.
Roll call. Okay, roll call.
Manley?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Chick?
No.
Dockett?
No.
Otto?
No.
Zelenak?
No.
Chockley?
Yes. That fails.
So, actually, I'd like to make a motion, though, that we consider, let, same consideration, but only taking Monday off so that they're, have Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday off.
Kind of go for Monday. Of this year only?
Of this year only, yeah.
I'll support.
They already get Monday, Tuesday.
But they would, we'd give them the Monday, and the same agreement would agree, the same proposal that the township manager put together, but it would only include Monday.
What day is it, the twenty-third?
They would be able to make the time up.
They could do that, yes, whatever his proposal is. Yes, we close on Monday.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Zelenak. Who supported that?
I'll support.
Motion, support by Manley.
Can we get clarity on what that would be? You'd have the weekend and the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday off?
Correct.
So, right now, you have Tuesday, Wednesday. You would get the Monday, and it would be the same conditions that the township manager had put together, except it wouldn't be the Thursday, Friday.
And not for New Year's, just for Christmas.
That's just for Christmas.
The twenty-third.
So, people can take five days off.
They could, but...
By that, is what you're saying?
Okay.
But it's only the Monday.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Monday, December twenty-third.
You're just closing the twenty-third.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yep.
Wait.
Right. It's only one day.
No, no, it's not the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Christmas Eve is the twenty-fourth.
Yes, yes, it is. We're just closing the one day, the twenty-third, because we're already closed on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
Just the township offices, not the...
That's correct.
Okay.
Let me know that the offices, the township offices would be closed on the twenty-third.
Okay.
And it would be the same proposal that the township manager put together, except it only includes the twenty-third.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. That passes seven-zero. Oh, I don't know that we can get into your items.
When does your...
I would, I would like to table this to the next meeting, because...
It'll just have to go on the next billing cycle?
Huh?
Then it won't be able to go on the November bill. It'll have to go on the next one, so that's fine.
But there has to be, to me, there has to be more discussion than just letting you do it.
Yep. Nope, that's fine. Okay.
We're tabling it.
What?
Putting it on the survey.
The survey.
So, there's more discussion. It won't go in the November bill.
So, who made the motion to table?
I made the motion to table.
Otto and Zelenak.
I would like to have us talk about it.
Um, you were gonna leave at nine-thirty.
I don't care. This is important.
We have three months until the next bill comes out, so we have lots of time to discuss it.
Well, do we want to handle this now, or what is the point?
It's gonna take a lot of discussion.
I thought it was a no-brainer if you just all vote yes.
Okay.
That's what I was hoping, but it's not going to be.
Okay, so we have a motion to table. All in favor, say aye.
We have a motion to table.
Are we gonna have a discussion or no?
Yeah, we can discuss.
How does the board feel about this?
I feel that it's gonna be a longer discussion than we have the time to make today. That's why I asked for questions in that before.
All right, all right, I'll go along.
And Jennifer didn't have time to get to the survey anyway, so...
So, we need a roll call?
No.
We don't need a roll call.
We don't.
Otto, Zelenak. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you.
So, when does the survey bills go out again?
November first and what, February first? Yeah, something like that.
November first.
February?
What happened to eight?
Okay, the next item is announcements. Do we have any announcements?
What happened to eight?
Yeah, there's an announcement.
It is.
Isn't there trunk-or-treat happening this weekend?
Trunk-or-treat at the community, well, the North Village Park. It's from three to five.
Three to five?
On Sunday.
Sunday, this Sunday.
So, I would like, I would like to make a public request.
Could somebody tell me what, what are we...
No, this is announcements.
Announcements?
What are we...
But I would like to make a public request in regards to the trunk-or-treat on Sunday, the twenty-seventh, that we do not hand out political material on proposal one.
Yep, the DDA is already stipulating that.
And that we keep this, proposal one is an adult topic, and the trunk-or-treat is the children's event, and because the property is owned by the township, and it's a township event, that no campaigning material should be allowed.
Agreed.
At all.
Agreed, agreed. Okay.
Closed on Monday, the twenty-third only.
All right, is that a motion?
No, that is, that is a request.
The DDA doesn't want to have that happen there anyway.
Well, I know in the past, when we had trunk-or-treat, there has been campaign material distributed. And I just feel that this is one thing that we should not have at trunk-or-treat, is campaign material on proposal one.
Is there any legal constraints on that, Mr. Burns?
It's a, this is a township property.
I'm just asking.
It's still potentially, political free speech is the most protected free speech, so you're still gonna have a problem. I mean, you can stand up to call the public.
So, I can put a sign on township property?
I'm not saying you can put a sign on township property, but I'm just saying you're in treacherous territory because it's political free speech.
So, people can come here and start handing out material here at our board meetings.
Okay.
I, okay.
It is protected speech.
Watch your words, George.
It's not the intention of the DDA to have that.
Well, I just feel that wasn't, the intent of the event is for children and for families. It's not for a political event.
People will be respectful of that.
I just feel, I'm not making a motion. I'm just, I'm just asking and requesting people to be respectful.
Any more announcements?
And that's on both sides.
Yeah, any more announcements?
I respect that.
Chili Cookoff, November second, eleven.
Chili Cookoff, okay. No, no.
No, that wasn't a motion. That was a request.
Chili Cookoff.
Where's that?
I respect that.
Living Water, November second, eleven.
November second, okay.
Eight AM to two PM. There's gonna be music, games for children. Chili, obviously, come and join.
Okay, yep. Oh, and the Whitmore Lanes is having a ribbon cutting on Friday, and it'll be four to six.
That's true. Thanks for that reminder.
The new ownership.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Is that all the announcements? Okay, second call to the public. Anyone like to come up and speak tonight?
Oh, you're gonna be tired from sitting there that long, everybody.
Yeah.
Testing, yes, there you go. No, I was gonna speak at the first call of the public. But I said, well, I'm gonna wait, because I know there's a lot of people out there that want to hear what I got to say. But I want to let you know one thing, Marlene. I kind of want to talk about one thing that...
You'd be a little closer to the...
I want to talk about one thing that really affects, not so much the dispensaries right now, but one item I think affects the Horseshoe Lake Corporation in the township. And I don't believe the township is at fault for it. I am the clerk for the Horseshoe Lake Corporation. I'm also a trustee, and I take care of the roads. And I'm gonna, I retired, but I think I'm gonna go back, because I'm gonna rest then. But anyhow, to get to it, when property is sold on tax sale, for some reason, it should come to me, because I gotta let these people know as a clerk, here's our rules, here's the garbage collector you use, here's a little bit about the township, here's a little plot map of Horseshoe Lake and so on like that. They sold some property, I think, back in April on tax sale. I still don't know who owns it. So, somewhere, there's a breakdown, and I don't think it's the township. I think, really think it's the county, you know? But it's something that we should look at, because, you know, soon as I find out that we got a new member, I make up a little booklet. I tell them about the township. I tell them about Horseshoe Lake. I tell them that we use GFL, so on like that, because they give us, we have so many, they give us a nice discount and everything else, you know? And I give them a lot of, about our flag, our red flag and so on like that, and there's no way at that time because we're flooded and so on like that. It has a bundle of information, but three, three, four, five, six months or so, just too late, you know? And I have to know a little earlier, because by that time, they've already got a garbage collector, maybe advance or so on like that, you know, and it's too late. So, I really need your help in see if we can make this happen a little bit sooner. Now, you just sold a lot, two-twenty-four and two-twenty-six, because the guy bought two-twenty-five. Well, I just found out, you know, there was a guy there looking at it, at his one lot that he got on tax sale. And I told him, I says, you know, and he said, I'm gonna build a house here. I said, that's kind of a small lot. Why don't you go to the township? There's two-twenty-six on that side and two-twenty-four on that side. See if they'll sell it to you. And you did. Now, all of a sudden, he's over there, you know, ready to build and everything else, and of course, people are screaming at me. So, I said, I don't know, I'll go online to make sure they, he owns it. It's done with the township name and still on a tax sale. You know, so I have to have your help in this here.
We'll see if we can figure that out.
Yeah, it's very important now.
But your time's up, Mr.?
Yeah, but can I get to talk about the dispensary? It's a different item. That was a very important item. And this here dispensary is kind of, you know, yes, I made a script here, but I'm glad I, I kind of made it, because I'm, I'm not gonna go by the script. I'm going by what's here. You know, I heard Jackie say, well, I've been here for seventeen years. She's a Piker. I've been here for forty years. So, anyhow, you know, we look at this dispensary, right next door over here, the Kelly family's gonna develop a housing project there. So, I went to Pat today, and I said, Pat, I'm going to the township board, and can I talk about your housing development? He says, yeah, you sure can. I said, well, good. I'm gonna mention it to him, and I say, this is Walmart. But I noticed you got a lot of yes signs up there and so on like that. He said, well, George, I'm gonna tell you, if we have dispensaries, we're gonna have a hemp farm over there. That'll be my growth, with a hemp farm. I said, well, okay, if you have a hemp farm, I'm gonna put a sign up there that says, this is Jackie and Janice' growth, right there. But I'm gonna tell you when, right now.
You're overtime, Mr. Brown.
We, the three of us, were with CRGN. We were for growth, what was it called? Citizen for Responsible Growth. I don't see that growth. I seen a yarn shop gone. I seen the massage parlor gone. I seen the hair gone. I see our bank gone. What's happening? Where is that growth? You know, somewhere, we got let down, that we should have growth, you know? Right now, I talked to Ed at Polly's Market, and he said, once that bank left, I lost seventy-five customers a day, all because we don't have the growth that I, you, and you said we're gonna do, and we need it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
And I'll tell you, last thing, dispensaries are not going to promote growth. Now, Mr. Dockett has no signs up there, and I think, good, because I found out anytime...
Mr. Brown, you're way overtime.
Anytime, anytime he puts a sign up, people vote the opposite way. So, good luck.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who'd like to come up? Good evening.
Margaret Rydell, six-five, one-four-one, West Date Mile. Five hundred feet away from the school property lines, and then gee, a thousand feet between pop places. Doesn't make very much sense to me, but I guess. But basically, what I'm gonna talk about right at the moment is the park. What do they have, about eight thousand people in Northfield? Somewhere like that, something like that. At any rate, five acres? You're gonna have a park of five acres? That's a joke. That park was dedicated, I thought, as Northfield Community Park or something, not North Village. There were survey after survey. Ms. Zelenak spoke to a couple of surveys. I was at your wonderful little meeting where everybody was running around with little stickers and sticking them, and gee, the most stickers got stuck on preserve the land. Yet, you're in here trying to say shrink the park. Ah, yeah. Ah, yeah. Your summer survey. How would you spend a dollar? Preserve the land, got almost $25 worth of votes. Develop the park, almost $19. Improve downtown, 17. Fix the road, 17. Encourage business, 13, 44. $13.44 out of that dollar. Encourage residential development, $8.97. Now, I don't know, you're talking about developing, you're talking about...you just got done saying that that was going to cost a quarter acre could cost maybe four or five houses. Houses are last on the line. Parks are up near the top. Preserve the lands near the top. I just...you know, you went, you rushed to this pot thing, yet you can't see that people want parks, people want to preserve the land. I don't understand it.
I know everyone wants to go home. Amy Scholl Jennings wrote, I just got a couple of comments after listening to the board member comments after the first call to the public. Ms. Manley, you are correct. It is under your reign that that was finally corrected, so with the voting precinct. You're absolutely right, and I really appreciate that. Ms. Chick, I appreciate that you actually looked at George while he was speaking. Ms. Otto, I'm frustrated with a lot of things you said tonight. I appreciate the really difficult position that you and everyone here is in. It's really thankless, and I understand that. But, you know, I was frustrated at your definition of responsibility being having money. I think that's something we all try to teach children is incorrect. I think responsibility is dotting your i's, crossing your t's, having people voting in the right precincts, having people in the right school districts and things like that. And frankly, it was embarrassing for me for you to talk about the township, you know, being affluent or something to that effect when there's a family with young children here saying for months they've had raw sewage in their home. And I appreciate your compassion, Mr. Dockett, for empathizing with that because that's unconscionable. Maybe you guys can help them take care of it and then put into action a way to what do you do if it happens to 1,000 people? What do you do from there? But that's awful. I mean, that's...so I appreciate your stance of empathy toward them. Imagine raw sewage in your home and then the township talking about being affluent or, you know, bragging about being in the black. And honestly, I think that we should have a lot of money because if you look over the last 50 years, what are our property taxes compared to others in the state? If we didn't have money and weren't solvent, we'd have to dissolve the township because our consistently are in the top one to two of the entire state. And we don't see a lot of services for that. So I don't think that makes you responsible. It means we have a lot of tax revenue from people carrying a lot of weight. There is a lot of responsible decision-making. I'm not trying to undermine that. I don't want to, you know, be lost or go down that path. But I think the definition of having money, I don't think that makes a responsible situation. I hope that we all have more ethics than that and to understand it's doing what's right when town people need help. And then as far as the conservative issue, you're absolutely right. Statistically, people pro or against recreational marijuana don't fall in party lines, but the recreational dispensary allowance is...does fall along party lines typically. And when I say conservative, I think it's appalling to allow dozens of dispensaries when we don't even have a hallmark or...I mean, it's just, I...what are we teaching our children about responsible development and growth? It's...and I think that Greenup Township is...they're a really good resource. There were several items tonight that people said, I don't know how to go about this or that. I walked in and talked to them, and they said it's pretty darn simple for a lot of things we struggle with. And I think, as I've said before, and I don't mean it to sound pejorative, but we need some sort of a mentor on a lot of things here. And I think you guys end up spinning your wheels because you're stuck on issues that you don't need to be stuck on. I mean, you know, unfortunately, the dispensary issue has taken up a lot of your time this year, and a lot of other important issues have taken a backseat, and other townships took care of that right off the bat.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Shaw.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes?
There's only one anyone left.
Yeah, that's right.
David Gordon. It's really sad and frustrating to watch what's happening with the North Village. It started as a park idea, and now from what I've been able to glean listening tonight, you have the developers dictating to you how much property you're going to have for a park. They're saying, we need 19 acres to make a profit, so if you guys need four acres, you know, you get four acres. Who's dictating the terms here? Who bought the property? I think it's owned by the township, not by the developers. But there's a love of development here that's so obvious when you don't want to give up a quarter of an acre, or you're willing to say, well, why, we might lose five houses if we lose a quarter, can't give up a quarter of an acre. It just kind of lets you know where you are on this thing. Nobody's going to say, let's move to Whitmore Lake because they have some new condos there. They're going to say, hey, let's go to the lake because we can actually put our feet in the water. The park should come first. Build the park, have the township build the park. What's so frustrating to me is you started out with a park idea, which immediately morphed into a big development, but you've never had the guts to go back to the community and say, oh, by the way, this is where...this is where we're at right now. We're ready to put down the hammer and say, these developers can come in and do this. But you haven't said to the voters, hey, are you willing to spend 100 bucks a year to have a park and just have it all for you as a park? You haven't even put the question to them. And that's frankly irresponsible. It's assuming that they won't pony up. They ponied up for this building, they ponied up for the new high school, they ponied up for the million-dollar fire truck, they pony up for the library. You ask the voters here if they're willing to put money up, their tax dollars for a specific project, they historically say yes. Why aren't you asking them? I think it's because you're more in love with development than you are with parks. And in terms of the meeting, is it 10 o'clock yet? No, it's 10:30. If you guys can't get your meetings done on time, have more meetings. Have a meeting every week until you catch up. If you've got so much to do. But it seems like to me it's a big gab session here. Everybody's got to jump in and say something. And I like what this woman just said today about a mentor, because you guys spend a bunch of time arguing about stuff that doesn't get you anywhere. There's a lack of leadership and there's a lack of professionalism, and you don't have a broad consensus on the park. It'll be a real shame if you go through the whole process and build the whole thing out and it doesn't do what you want. Because you will have wasted a lot of...I mean, it's the only open property on the lake. I don't even know if four acres is enough. Is four acres enough to have parking for the Fourth of July, for the hockey tournament, for the two biggest things that bring people into this township, into Whitmore Lake? Or are you developing a proposal there that's going to kill the two biggest things that historically have been happening here? Is there an answer to that? Do you know? Is there going to be enough parking for the Fourth of July?
We can talk after.
I think the public would be interested in knowing.
You don't ever build for the most extreme case, you know? So you...you know, anyway, this isn't a Q and A time, but thank you for your comments.
You know, that would be the one other question I'd like to ask. When is the board going to have a public Q and A time?
It's a good idea. Thank you. Okay, board response.
Oh, one more.
Okay, thank you.
Jim Nelson, 7777 Sutton Road. A lot of people are...well, everything David Gordon said is true. You're destroying the fireworks celebration, you're destroying the hockey tournament. When you pave over their parking lot, that's all you've got. That's the only thing happening in this town. The really amazing thing is watching people call themselves conservatives pushing so hard against the personal initiative that's made possible in this town by this insane rush by...how many people have approached you about marijuana shops, dispensaries, grow operations, micro businesses, all this stuff? In the real world business, most of those businesses will fail, but they're trying. They're trying to do something. It's an organic evolutionary process that's rising from within the population. It isn't planting a McDonald's on the corner. It isn't planting another Chili's. It isn't planting another big box store. It's only going to provide minimum wage. It's people trying to build businesses themselves. And you have blocked them in every possible way. Anyway, it's...this struggle is not going to end on November 5th because this is an off-year election. Nobody's going to show up. I'm guessing that the prohibitionists will win, and they'll have gotten 20 hours of free legal help courtesy of some real corruption on the part of this board. And the real referendum will come next year when people get together and they vote out that piece of human filth in the White House because everybody's going to be at that election.
Okay, thank you. Board member comments. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say? Mr. Dockett?
Yes. I will say I am not for being in cahoots with a developer. I believe the property. I mean, there's one sure way to get in a lot of trouble in the real estate business. You know, these guys are putting up nothing. We're putting up a half a million dollars of your people's money. That's what we've got invested in that ground up there. And I don't think we should be building, going in business with any developer that don't have the money to buy the property to do what they want to do with it. So I'm with all of you people that say we don't need...we don't need this project. Also, I'm sorry of all the hard feelings there is on this marijuana thing. I'll be glad when it's over. Frankly, whatever way it turns out, I will accept, and I will be happy to accept. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Otto?
So I would say the same thing that Mr. Dockett has said. I am looking forward to November 5th. It is the voice of the voter that will come through, and it will be the determining factor of where we go, and as a board member, I will accept it as well. It's always...we've always said that either the one part that we've had to do as a board is protect the township, and we did that by putting an ordinance in place in the event that it failed, proposal one failed. And we did that, we did what we were supposed to do, and if it passes, then we don't have to worry about it, and we opt out. So I appreciate everybody coming out tonight and making their...and providing their comments. And I look forward to seeing everyone in trunk or treat.
Thank you. Ms. Chick?
Okay, real quickly, I say that all the time, but I just wanted to speak to, I just thought of it, the one audience member that spoke to board members taking money from any big business. And I don't think there's anyone on this panel or anyone in the future that I can even imagine that would take money from a company or any business to buy votes. It just...I found it offensive that that even was mentioned. I just...even if we don't agree on something, I...we all have enough integrity not to be going in that direction, so...or and I hope anybody in the future is as well, so I just wanted to comment on that. I thought it was wrong to say that.
Ms. Manley?
I was going to reply to Mr. Brown, but I'll email him. He can always call the assessor or Max or Mary, and they can look at the deeds to see who owns the property if they don't let us know. Again, get out and vote November 5th. If you need an absentee ballot or absentee application, come into the clerk's office. We can get those for you. We will be open November 2nd from 8:00 to 4:00 to service for any absentee ballots or applications that come in. I think that's it.
What day is that?
Saturday.
I think you should mention that Saturday. I mean...
November, yeah.
Yeah, the Saturday before the election. We will be open.
Saturdays are good.
And if you have questions on your ballot, they are online also because the ballot does not say proposal one, so I don't want that to confuse anybody. I don't want the schools to get the wrong vote. So just read your ballots if you have questions, look at that online, ask someone for help. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Bellinger?
I just want to, well, thank the members of the public that came out tonight, and I also want to say that I want to thank the members of the community. It's a heartfelt thank you to the members of the community that have a genuine concern for the welfare and well-being of the township. Thank you all.
Thank you. Do you have any things to say?
Yes, I'd like to again thank everybody that came out, everyone that's listening. Do go out and vote November 5th. And I think, you know, we should think about doing a survey on some, you know, specific topics. I know Ms. Manley is going to try to do one on the sewer basin, but I think it's something to consider that we really get what people are. We have some big items that will define the township forever. And one thing I learned, I was going to sell some property that my mom and dad owned for 50 years on the Asabo River, and a gentleman said, once you sell it, you'll never get it back.
Well, thank you, everyone, for putting up with this long meeting. It was productive, though. I appreciate you staying past the 9:00 and the 9:30. That's really helpful. The 10:00 and the 10:30, yes.
And the 10:00 and the 10:30.
But anyway, if anybody has any concerns about any items, feel free to call me. My cell phone number's on my card downstairs. I'm happy to talk to anybody about anything going on at the township here. And I really...it is hurtful when people get up there and make accusations that I know are unfounded, and so...
I would like to say what Mrs. Chick said. I think we're all honorable, every one of us that's on this board. I've been on here for...with you people for almost over three years, or three years, and I think we're all honorable.
Yep. Anyway, I'll make a motion to adjourn here. A motion by Chalkley, support by Manley. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? No, thank you.
On the next...
Yeah, right. Bring your pajamas. Bring your, bring your pajamas.